I almost said good morning.
Good job.
Yeah, yeah, it is 1:00 PM, it is time to convene this meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Hannigan?
Here.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Here.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Here.
Chair Mashburn?
Here. Could you all stand and join me in a salute to the flag in a moment of silence? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we're on the presentations, but we're gonna have to shuffle them around a little bit. So I would ask Supervisor Williams, are you ready to do yours?
Are you ready?
Oh, that's wonderful. Madam Clerk, could we look at item two, please, ma'am?
Adopt and present a resolution recognizing November 2024 as In-Home Support Services Home Care Workers Month in Solano County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So ordered by a vote of five zero.
Definitely. All right. Well, it's really a great honor for me to present this recognition and this resolution because I myself was an in-home supportive service worker for many years. I not only cared for my grandparents as a teen doing this work, but also my two children who are no longer with me today. But I can tell you, it was truly a labor of love and commitment, and I remember the difficulties of trying to find an amazing worker, service worker, to actually come and assist my son when he wanted to be independent. And so families kind of end up, a lot of times are forced to help their families because it's hard to find good workers. So I'm always thankful for the ones that do do this work and stand up for it. But we're gonna go ahead and read this resolution. A resolution, a resolution of the Solano County Board of Supervisors recognizing November 2024 as In-Home Supportive Services Home Care Workers Month in Solano County. Whereas numerous national organizations have joined together in declaring the month of November as National Home Care Month to recognize, honor, and support the valuable contributions of home care workers. And whereas the California In-Home Supportive Services Program is recognized nationally and has been replicated in other states as a preferred way to assist people who need long-term care, and whereas providing services and support to the disabled and elderly to remain living in their homes is a humane, dignified, and compassionate alternative to long-term care or other institutional placements. And whereas more than 5,700 IHSS home care workers provide home care services and support in Solano County, making it possible for approximately 6,600 eligible low-income disabled and elderly residents to remain living independently in their homes. And whereas the work of Solano County IHSS home care workers requires sensitivity, honesty, place, patience, trust, commitment, declaration, and compassion. Yes. Whereas the work of Solano County IHSS home care workers is both physically demanding and emotionally challenging. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Solano County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the month of November 2024 as Solano County In-Home Supportive Services Home Care Workers Month and signed by our Chair Supervisor Mitch Mashburn. Thank you. And anyone here that will be speaking, yes?
Hello, my name is Gwendolyn Gill. I'm the Health Services Administrator for Older and Disabled Adult Services in Solano County, part of Health and Social Services. Thank you Supervisor Mashburn as our Chair and all of our Board of Supervisors for taking time to hear this message today. We appreciate it. I imagine many of us have had personal experiences with caregiving. Either we've received care or we've offered care to others who needed it. Caring for my mother who suffered with dementia a number of years ago was one of the most difficult but yet priceless times in my life. Today, we celebrate in-home supportive services caregivers across Solano County who are making a positive difference for many IHSS recipients. Please welcome Donna Brown, our IHSS Advisory Committee President, and also her caregiver, Misha Leonard Ragsdale. Donna Brown will speak.
I hope you guys are... We have a microphone. I wanted to try and... I didn't know I was gonna be this emotional, but I have been an IHSS recipient for more than 20 years, so this program, it, I just can't stress enough how important it is for me because for these 20 years, I've been able to remain in my own home and have wonderful caregivers like Misha, and I have five caregivers altogether, six actually, that work different shifts, and I'm able to independently and with dignity live in my own home and manage my daily life. And if I didn't have this program, I would likely be at an institution. And as a member of the Advisory Board since 2008, I've been firsthand, I've seen firsthand how essential this program is, not only for recipients like me, but also for the caregivers who are the backbone of the program. The support they provide allows me to live a full, active life and helps me, help me with preparing meals and assisting me with household chores. Caregiver support is vital, and IHSS helps ensure that caregivers are supported and compensated fairly for their hard work. This program truly means, makes a world of difference in my life, and I believe it is the most critical resource available to individuals with disabilities and other people, seniors sometimes need the help as well. The peace of mind it provides to families, the independence it gives to me and other recipients, and the dignity allows us to maintain are all valuable. It's more than just a service. It's an everyday...
It meets a life of independence and quality, and I'm grateful in every day that IHSS has been part of my journey.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your, your journey, your story, because I, I was on the caregiving end, but I do understand how important IHSS is and what it provides. And again, thank you for your service and thank you for sharing.
My name is Danielle Alanco. I work for the IHSS Public Authority Department.
Hello, Ms. Dunn, how you doing? Man, you looking good today. Yes, good afternoon, my name is Kara Vincent, and I'm on the, I'm the Advisory Board Member, and I'm representing the best district in Solano County, District Three.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, we can keep going.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
So we throw the photo?
Adopt and present a resolution recognizing November 2024 as National Adoption Month to demonstrate appreciation for the adoptive families and social workers who provide permanency to children in need throughout Solano County. Do I have a motion? So ordered by a vote of five zero.
Come on down, everybody, we've all fit. Well, everybody, thank you. This is kind of an, not kind of, it is absolutely an honor, and it's kind of a personal honor for me because for many years, my wife and I used to foster youth in this county. And to see children find their forever home and gain that sense of permanency and belonging and support and help and love that is missing out of their life is huge. And so to have families in this county who are willing to open their homes and to do that, and to take these children in and make them part of their family forever and share that love is incredible. So to that end, we as a board are gonna recognize National Adoption Month. And this resolution reads, "National Adoption Month provides an opportunity to recognize and sow appreciation to adoptive families and the dedicated professionals who are committed to these families and the children they adopt. There are approximately 82 children in Solano County's foster care system awaiting adoption and in need of finding loving and permanent families. In 2023, Child Welfare Services finalized 52 adoptions, and during this program year, 37 children have been adopted, with an additional 13 pending adoption finalizations by the end of the calendar year. Child Welfare Services supports a kin-first culture with an unwavering commitment to nurturing and supporting relationships that honors children and youth by strengthening pathways for lasting bonds. Children and youth deserve a strong support network that meets their needs, embraces and affirms their identity, and promises and promotes family, community, and cultural connections. Every child deserves a permanent place to call home. This year's outreach and awareness, awareness-raising fund efforts continue to highlight the need for committed families for older children and youth in foster care. This year's theme of honoring youth, strengthening pathways for lasting bonds, highlights the importance of recognizing and supporting the needs of young people in the child welfare system, aiming to create strong, enduring connections with families and communities that provide them with a sense of belonging and stability throughout their lives." And I just want to reiterate and point out that in 2023, 52 children's lives changed forever in this county, thanks to the work of the folks that are standing behind me. Thirty-seven children have been adopted this year with 13 pending. So all of those children now, moving forward, have a very different life, thanks to all of you, and I want to say thank you from all of us. And with that, I turn it over.
Sure. Good afternoon, Board. Roger Robinson, Assistant Director with Health and Social Services. And one thing I can say about National Adoption Day is that here in Solano County, we're not only meeting the state measures for timely permanency, but we're also meeting the federal standard for timely permanency. That's unheard of throughout this country. One of the main metrics that Child Welfare Department struggle with is meeting timely permanency for children when they're brought into care. And here in Solano County, we are meeting those standards, and it is thanks to this team. And so with that being said, I want to bring up our Administrator, Rhonda Smith.
Good afternoon, I almost said good morning. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you Supervisor Mashburn for your support, and thank you as well to the rest of the supervisors. I am Rhonda Smith, as Mr. Robinson indicated, the Social Services Administrator for Child Welfare Services. I'm honored to support the resolution recognizing November 2024 as National Adoption Month, a time to celebrate our dedicated staff who worked tirelessly to create life-changing bonds for children in need of permanency. Before I continue, though, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Mar, Ms. Margaret Freo, she corrected me, Freo, Manager of the Permanency Services Section overseeing the Adoptions Unit. She and her team play a crucial role in placing children in permanent loving homes. Following my remarks, Ms. Freo will share some more about the exceptional work that they do. Adoption is about more than just legal permanence. It's about providing love, stability, and belonging that every child deserves. Our Child Welfare Services Team is at the heart of this process, guiding families and youth through challenging circumstances to build lasting connections. Their work reflects the county's commitment to creating safe, nurturing environments for all children. This year's theme, honoring youth, strengthening pathways for lasting bonds, highlights the efforts of our staff who prioritize the needs and voices of children we serve. With 52 adoptions finalized last year and more underway, their dedication is truly making a difference. I urge the Board to adopt this resolution to honor both our adoptive families and the incredible work of the Child Welfare Services Team here in Solano County. We are creating brighter futures for Solano County's children. I thank you, and now I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Freo. Ooh, without messing anything up.
Thank you, Rhonda, and thank you, Board members, for shining a light on this most human of needs, which is the need to belong. When our children are adopted into a family, that family is saying to them, "You're one of us, now and forever, you belong." And when there's a newborn who needs a family, there are many that come forward quickly and are ready to, to take that child into their home. When children are a little bit older or have intensive needs or come with a sibling set that they're deeply committed to, it gets harder. This afternoon, one of our supervisors, Kristi Groton, is going to share, briefly share, some stories of some of those youth who have found permanency through adoptive families. And these stories and these youths are one of the many reasons I'm so incredibly proud of our adoption team who work every day to find belonging for the children of Solano County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristi Groton, and I am a Social Services Supervisor with Solano County in the Permanency Assessment Unit. And we have some additional staff, most of our staff are in training today, but we, I'll go ahead and let them introduce themselves and let them tell their role real quick.
Deanna Hisong, I work with families post-adoption.
Hi, my name is Kate Leo. I am a social worker three in the permanency assessment program.
Hi, my name is Jasmine De Los Santos, and I am the Office Assistant in our Adoption Unit.
And it truly takes a team to make adoptions happen. It starts in the beginning, when we take a child into protective custody. We are a kinship, family-first county, and so that means that right away, we're looking to place with families available and, and keep siblings together. I'd like to go over a few of the adoptions that we had this year that involved siblings and relative placements. A lot of our adoptions, we do complete with relatives and siblings. Recently in June, we finalized on a teen. He has developmental needs, as does his sister. They will be lifelong regional center children, youth, adults. And we found a family who also parented special needs children of their own, and they wanted to continue to parent, and so this was a really nice match. And this youth, one youth was, the brother was placed first in the home, and then just recently, after two years of being in a regional center facility, his sister transitioned to the same home. We are expecting to finalize with her later this year or early next year. Another finalization that we're doing on the 22nd is a youth that spent 10 years in care as a dependent with Solano County. He is going to be adopted by a teacher that he met in a group home. He and his spouse are adopting on the 22nd. And then finally, we placed a child out of state with a maternal aunt. The child was six and had a diagnosis of autism and had a lot of needs. She was unable to really speak or toilet, and she was able to make amazing gains with this aunt, and out of state, and so we finalized in June. She's talking using a device, she's developing really well, very happy with her, her adoptive family, which was her maternal aunt. So thank you so much in supporting us in this difficult but rewarding work, and thanks to our team, our amazing team of administrators and staff who are dedicated and compassionate in doing this work. So thank you very much.
And I'd like to give a, a little shout out to one other group who does a lot of work to help in support of this, and that's the County Council's Office. Thank you for all you do for them. All right, so with that, y'all, just go down here and get a picture.
Adopt and present a resolution recognizing November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month. Do I have a motion? So ordered by a vote of five zero.
So ordered by a vote of five-zero.
Paige, you can stay right next to me. I'm Erin. Nice to meet you. You've got Alejandro and Lindsay. Yeah. Gang's all here. Awesome. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to start out this presentation by including a land acknowledgement. And if you're familiar with a land acknowledgement, or if you're not familiar with a land acknowledgement, it is essentially identifying that we conduct our business, we conduct our life, on the land that was previously walked upon by our Native American ancestors here. And so, we're very fortunate to have some representation as well. So, I'll get started. As we celebrate Native American Heritage Month in Solano County and around our nation, I would open with this land acknowledgement statement. We now take a moment to acknowledge the land on which we are gathered for this meeting. For thousands of years, this land has been the home of Potwin people, including the Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation. The Potwin people have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. It has been cherished and protected, as elders have instructed the young through generations. We are grateful and honored to be gathered here today on their traditional lands. And so, now for our board item. So, we are very fortunate today to have members of the Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation here. Next to me is Paige Kinter, and she'll be speaking, as well as we have Alejandro Garcia, raise your hand. Rich Ritz in the back, raise your hand, and Lindsay Baer. And I want to thank you all for being here today. The resolution of the Solano County Board of Supervisors recognizing November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in Solano County. Whereas Native American Heritage Month has been established at the national and state levels with proclamations and celebrations to recognize the diverse cultures, traditions, histories, significant contributions, and present-day lives of Native Americans. Solano County was established in 1850, and with an area of California that represented the unceded territory of indigenous people known as the Potwin or Southern Winton. And the county is, in fact, named for a Potwin leader, Sina, or Semieto, whom Spanish missionaries christened and assigned the Spanish name of Solano. The county is in, let's see, the earliest historic written records of the Potwin, which literally means people in the Native tribal language, began, begins with the Spanish mission explorations and registers. And ethnohistoric records show the Potwin inhabited land from the hills of the eastern north-coast ranges to the Sacramento River, and from Princeton south to the San Pablo and Susun bays, including the city of Vallejo. The county of Solano has a meaningful government-to-government relationship with the Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation, and works in partnership to address the needs of the community and improve the lives of people who live within their respective jurisdictions today. Yosha-Dhihe is recognized by the state's Native American Heritage Commission as the most likely descendant of the Potwin people buried in Solano County, and so it works closely with local governments and agencies throughout the county to protect sacred burial sites from disturbance and desecration. And Yosha-Dhihe, along with its sister Potwin tribe, Kitsel-Dhihe Band of Winton Indians, helped save a controversial waterfront park project, the city of Vallejo's Glen Cove, negotiating a landmark cultural easement that satisfied opponents while protecting the burial sites and sacred resources contained there, and allowing the Potwin tribes to practice their traditional ceremonies. And native people have made and continue to make distinct and significant contributions in many fields, including academics, scholarship, agriculture, astronomy, art, business, education, ecology, engineering, environmentalism, economics, forestry, government, language, leadership, literature, mathematics, medicine, military, music, politics, poetry, science, and traditional cultural practices. And the tribe partners with Solano County to support several health and well-being programs designed to improve the lives of people in the ancestral territory. And the county values its relationship with the Potwin tribe. And Solano County honors the history of Yosha-Dhihe and its sister Potwin tribes in tribute to all of the people of Potwin descent whose ancestors once resided here in Solano County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Solano County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in Solano County. And this was signed by our Chair Mitch Mashburn. And it is such an honor to have you here today to celebrate. It turns out that the Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation also meets on Tuesdays, so it's very challenging to get a representative to come to our meetings. And so, we're very fortunate today to have a daughter of one of the council members, and I would, you have a chance to share with everybody here.
Thank you. We love all. Not yet Paige, my name is Paige Chul Benchili Spellehen of Sunpasni. I'm really happy I could be here today. I want to thank the Board for having us here today. On behalf of the Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation, we extend our deep appreciation for your support in honoring and preserving the rich cultural heritage of the Potwin people in Solano County. The deep-rooted connection of the Potwin people in Solano County traces back thousands of years, influencing much of the heritage and history of Solano County itself. Solano County was named after the Potwin tribal leader, Chief Solano, whose native name was Semieto. This land holds the stories of generations and serves as the foundation of the tribe's identity, traditions, and ways of life. We relied heavily on local resources like acorns, seeds, fish, and game, and cultivated knowledge of the local environment that was passed down through generations. For thousands of years, Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation has stewarded these lands, including sustainable practices that protect and honor the natural environment in Solano County. We have strong ties to our land and this community, and we have played an active role in supporting many social programs to help impoverished and needy families within Solano County. This proclamation honors our commitment to holding a stronger community. We support critical programs, including First Five, Solano County's Mobile Food Pharmacy, and scholarship funds for the local students to pursue their dreams. Our dedication to land preservation includes working with the city of Vallejo on a cultural easement at Glen Cove. Most recently, we entered in a collaborative effort with the Solano Land Trust, the county, and other partners in the preservation of Potwin Warlakodoy-Dhihe Open Space Park. Among many other efforts, these are testaments of the Potwin people's commitment to preserve sacred sites, maintain environmental harmony, and support Solano County families. These efforts are not only a responsibility to ancestors, but also a gift to future generations. So, I want to thank the Board again for this recognition and for reaffirming Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation's dedication to cultural preservation, environmental stewardship, and lifting up our local community. We invite the community to learn more about Potwin people and to continue building an inclusive future together. We love all.
Thank you, Paige. It's lovely. I do want to share for this month, we have a display that's out here in our lobby, as well as in our library lobbies, letting people know about the Native American culture that was here in Solano County. And so, please take a moment to take a look at what's going on and what has happened here in our county through Yosha-Dhihe and the Potwin people. It's very important that we continue to share this heritage. And so, with that, we're going to take a photo. And go up. Little front. Lindsay, you want to join us? Alejandro, you want to join us?
Wait about so long, if that's the part.
Okay. No time for a photo.
And we're also going to hand out gift bags for, I think, everyone here. Thank you so much.
So, we'll go and take a photo.
How much gifts?
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Very much.
Paige, Kinter.
We met.
Thanks for the gifts.
So, Chair, I think I might just want to add a little bit of commentary. Okay. So, this is the first year since 2018 that we have had the displays around the county government building, as well as in our libraries, celebrating Native American Heritage Month. And so, that's pretty cool that, you know, here we are back. We have a tremendous relationship with Yosha-Dhihe-Winton Nation. If you're not familiar with who they are, think Cache Creek. It's, our relationship is government-to-government. We have been the recipient of almost $8 million, a million dollars per year, from Yosha-Dhihe to put towards programs and activities in the county that supports all kinds of folks, whether it's seniors or juveniles who are in our justice system. You heard about First Five. They support our First Five Center in Vallejo. Oof, Fairfield's coming soon. And many other activities. And then, of course, we now have the park that is right across from Rockville Hills. And so, I really want to thank Yosha-Dhihe and all the support. Paige, thank you for coming down. You did great. I need to work on the enunciation, pronunciation of all those wonderful words. So, anyway, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that we have a tremendous relationship with them, and really am honored that you came here today and spent time with us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Quirk, that brings us to item four, ma'am.
Adopt and present a resolution recognizing November 11 through 15, 2024, as law enforcement records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week in Solano County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So ordered by a vote of five-zero.
All right, y'all, come on down. Come on, come on. I see DA folks. I see people from the sheriff's office. Come on. All y'all. I'm not letting anybody off the hook. Yeah, don't make Rex pick you up and carry you. Probation, we got a lot of folks. All right, this is kind of a special day, seeing I get to do another one that's kind of near and dear to the heart when it comes to service to our county. And this is one of those hidden gems that we don't always see out in the public. We always see the shiny badges and the fancy cars and those things, and that's all neat, and that's cool. But the folks behind the scenes who really make it happen, who make the gears move, they're the oil that makes everything work like it's supposed to. They're standing behind me right now. Those are our civilian support personnel. Those are the folks who are in our records division and in our personnel department, and they're in our budget department, and all those things that it takes to make an agency run. And I'll use the sheriff's office as an example. I mean, we have roughly 100 sworn officers. We have 500 people who work in that agency. It takes a lot of people to keep us all safe every day. It keeps a lot of people to give us all that sense of security and to assure that we have justice in Solano County for our residents. These are the folks that make that happen. I'm very appreciative. To that end, this resolution reads, "Law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend upon law enforcement records and support personnel to provide them with vital services. Law enforcement, civil, records, and support personnel are crucial in helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers. These professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintaining criminal statistics, and improving apprehension strategies whereby, through their efforts, criminals are booked, fingerprinted, prosecuted, incarcerated, in an efficient and safe manner. These professionals' daily responsibilities include processing crime and accident reports, warrants, court orders, restraining orders, traffic and parking citations, civil actions, court documents, subpoenas, discovery requests, transcripts redactions, perform pre-employment criminal history checks for the sheriff's office and allied agencies, maintain criminal offender records, and are responsible for the release of information to the public." Man, we make a lot of paperwork in law enforcement. Whereas these professionals provide exceptional service to customers, employees, their community, and the courts, the district attorney's office, and allied agencies, it is important to recognize Solano County's law enforcement, civil, records, and support personnel for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement and the community. And with that, I'd like to turn it over. And Lisa, are you going to do this for us? Lisa Donahue.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Donahue, the Director of Admin Services at the Solano County Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Chair Mashburn, and members of the Board for recognizing this week as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week. I came here to speak on behalf of the sheriff's office, but I also want to acknowledge our partners at the district attorney and probation. I know I represented here. So, our law enforcement records and support personnel, consisting of 23 professional staff in our records and warrants and civil bureaus, truly are the backbone of our office. They provide profound clerical support to our deputies, custody staff, and allied agencies. Our two staff working the front counter across the street are the first face of the sheriff's office to the public, and they often act as a resource to members of the public who aren't sure how to navigate our downtown campus, directing them to their courtroom, jury duty, where to get a birth certificate, or to pay their property taxes. They really have to know the lay of the land in the county. Our records bureau operates 24/7, 365 days a year, on weekends, holidays, all hours of the day and night. And they process reports, PRAs, enter warrants, and enter restraining orders daily as they are received from the courts. Our civil bureau processes, collects, and disperses civil actions, and works with our civil deputies to prepare documents for evictions. The accuracy and timeliness of the tasks both bureaus complete is an integral part of maintaining safety for our deputies and the public. And for their efforts, we thank and appreciate their hard work, not only this week, but all year long. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon to all. Genevieve Benson, Director of Admin Services, probation. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation for law enforcement, records, and support personnel. I want to thank each of you during this week. Our records and support team in probation may not always be visible to the public eye, but their work is the foundation upon which our operations stand. Accuracy, confidentiality, and reliability are the core of their roles, and they excel in each of these areas with quiet dedication. Their attention to details ensures that our processes run smooth and efficiently. To the probation staff, thank you. You make up the backbone of our department. Every day, you bring dedication, skill, and compassion to your work, and it's felt by each of us. Please know that your efforts, our department and the county of Solano, your efforts make our department, the county of Solano, and our community better. Thank you for your invaluable contributions, for the quiet strength you bring to our team, and for making a difference in so many ways. This week is a time to celebrate you, but let me assure you that your contributions are appreciated every day. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jason Nigiri, Senior Staff Analyst, representing the Solano County District Attorney's Office. I just want to say, we do appreciate-
to get a birth certificate, or to pay their property taxes. They really have to know the lay of the land in the county. Our records bureau operates 24/7, 365 days a year, on weekends, holidays, all hours of the day and night. And they process reports, PRAs, interwarrants, and interrestraining orders daily as they are received from the courts. Our civil bureau processes, collects, and disperses civil actions and works with our civil deputies to prepare documents for evictions. The accuracy and timeliness of the tasks both bureaus complete is an integral part of maintaining safety for our deputies and the public. And for their efforts, you know, we, we thank and appreciate their hard work, not only this week, but all year long. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon to all. Genevieve Benson, Director of Admin Services, probation. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation for law enforcement records and support personnel. I want to thank each of you during this week. Our records and support team in probation may not always be visible to the public eye, but their work is the foundation upon which our operations stand. Accuracy, confidentiality, and reliability are the core of their roles, and they excel in each of these areas with quiet dedication. Their attention to details ensures that our processes run smooth and efficiently. To the probation staff, thank you. You make up the backbone of our department. Every day you bring dedication, skill, and compassion to your work, and it's felt by each of us. Please know that your efforts, our department and the county of Solano makes, your efforts makes our department, the county of Solano, and our community better. Thank you for your invaluable contributions, for the quiet strength you bring to our team, and for making a difference in so many ways. This week is a time to celebrate you, but let me assure you that your contributions are appreciated every day. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jason Nigiri, Senior Staff Analyst, representing the Solano County District Attorney's Office. Just want to say we do appreciate the, the folks who support our attorneys, our investigators, our victim witness unit, even our crime lab as well. We have a multitude of legal secretaries, office assistants, investigative assistants, and, and volunteers who support the daily work of our office. And without them, our office wouldn't function. So this resolution is, uh, well-earned by them. Thank you.
All right. Well, I got to ask, you know, big imposing guy, I didn't want to not let him talk, if you didn't want. That said, I have everybody come down and we'll get us a photo real quick. We all fit. All right. That brings us to items from the public. And I do have one card for items from the public, and that is for Carl. Mr. Vincent, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to try and make this brief, too. Thanks, thanks for having me this afternoon. I appreciate y'all, and I appreciate everyone of y'all doing a tremendous job in, here in Solano County. So I just want to state that first. My name is Carl Vincent. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Fairfield Sassoon Rotary Club. And we are in our, I would think, 10th year, soon to be hosting annually the Good Character, the Good Character Youth Awards. And, um, the Fairfield Sassoon Rotary Club, in partnership with North Bay Health invites you all to our 10th annual Good Character, uh, Good Character Youth Awards. And we're honoring high school students from the Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District who have demonstrated in their daily lives the guiding principles of rotary. That's truthfulness, fairness, kindness, and helping others. And we're asking the elected officials, y'all guys, y'all are invited to provide each student a recognition certificate or other commemorative item from their respective offices. And this item will be put into a personalized bag that, and that, and presented at the ceremony. If you're able to and willing to provide a certificate or other commemorative item, please contact Kathy Rich. She's our secretary and treasurer. And the event is February the 5th, 2025. It starts at 5:30 PM. And check-ins and reception is at 6:10 PM. And this will be at the Ray Joan Crock Center in Sassoon City. And I have additional flyers to give to y'all guys. And if you have some information, please, we'll want, you know, we'll, excuse me, I'm kind of nervous. We would like y'all guys to be a part of this because the youth does a lot in this community, and also they, um, they're very warm-hearted and very innocent. And we want them, you know, just want to award them for their good doings. That's it. Thank you.
Carl, could I ask, sorry. Can I ask if you could get us the names of the recipients of each of them so that when we make the awards that they can be personalized?
Yes. That person would be, the contact person for that would be Kathy Rich, and our info on here as well, a phone number and a Gmail.
All right. Thank you very much. What's that? Yeah.
Yes, um, I can do that. And so I want to make sure. Okay, awesome, awesome. So I'll do that, and I'll let Kathy know as well. Awesome. So can I give y'all a flyer right now, or I have additional flyers to give to y'all guys, just a reminder? Okay. I'll make sure.
Thank you, Carl.
You're welcome.
All right. That brings us to additions or deletions from the agenda, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have no changes today.
Motion in a second.
So ordered by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. And, uh, we have no, I have no cards for public comment on consent. Does the board have any items that they would like to pull from consent, or? All right. Really quick, um, before we start, I just want to speak on item number 11 really quick, and I want to congratulate John Mazer on his retirement. It was a pleasure to work with John for many years at the sheriff's office. He's a great guy, and I wish him well in retirement, and I hope he enjoys it. Thank you, John, for your service to this county, keeping our residents safe. And so then, with that, I have a motion in a second.
So ordered by a vote of five zero.
All right. Madam Clerk, that brings us to item 14, ma'am.
Receive a report from Lizette Estraya Henderson, Solano County Superintendent of Schools, Solano County Office of Education, regarding the state of the schools related to the Williams case settlement audit for the 2024-2025 school year, specifically schools identified for visitation.
Which I can do. Good afternoon, Chair Mashburn, Vice Chair Hanigan, and the Board of Supervisors. It's our honor and privilege to be coming to you again. We usually do this on a yearly basis, and this afternoon we'll be providing you information regarding the Williams settlement audit results. And the first, let's see, do I have the clicker? Yes, I do. Maybe I don't. There we go. The first slide in your packet refers to our public schools countywide, and this information we bring to you on an annual basis. We are just hovering under 60,000 students. We used to be over 62,000 students countywide, so we are experiencing declining enrollment, just as many school districts are across the state. So this gives you information regarding our K-12 student enrollment in each of our school districts. The next slide in your packet also includes our charter schools countywide and our enrollment in our charter schools. This information you will note is based on the 2023-2024 K-12 student enrollment via the SEBETS student enrollment system. And that's a student enrollment system within which each of our school district's documents, excuse me, their enrollment every October. And so that SEBETS date has, that input, that information has not been, uh, released by the California Department of Education yet. So the most recent information that we have is 2023-2024. The next slide that we have for you is countywide student demographics. And this data includes all school types, including our charter schools, which are also public schools. And the data aligns with those that we are reporting in our SCOS annual report and our spotlight. And you would have received our SCO annual spotlight a couple of weeks ago, and where we highlighted several of our programs that are about our students countywide. And so this information is aligned, again, with the SEBETS reporting at the California Department of Education, again, for 2023-2024. And this data hasn't changed significantly over time. Certainly, the numbers vary from year to year, but primarily have stayed pretty constant in terms of our majority student groups in terms of ethnicity. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tacey Rogers. And Dr. Rogers is our Director of Research, um, excuse me, our Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation at the Solano County Office of Education. And it is through her leadership that this audit is conducted every year. It's quite an undertaking. The data needs to be submitted, the, the visits need to be completed, and the audit needs to be completed within the first eight weeks of school. So you can imagine that's a huge undertaking, especially at schools are opening. And she brings together a team of individuals from across the organization, including facilities, maintenance, and operations, instructional materials, and individuals. Again, it could include curriculum and instruction, career and college readiness. So a cross-organizational team is needed in order to undertake this, this huge audit. And so I thank her in advance for her leadership, and she's going to take the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Superintendent Estraya Henderson. Good afternoon. I'm Chair Mashburn, Vice Chair Hanigan, and board members, thank you for having us. On this slide that's being displayed indicates the criteria for which schools are selected for visitation. And there are three criteria. Schools only need to meet one of these options to be selected for visitation. And the list of schools that meet this criteria is a list that's provided to us by the California Department of Education. The first criteria is if the school's eligible for comprehensive support and improvement. And the acronym for that you see listed is CSI. The second criteria that a school would need to meet would be eligible for additional targeted support and improvement. That's listed there as ATS I. And then the third criteria that a school would need to meet is if 15% or more of their teachers are what's categorized by the State Department as misassigned. They would be eligible for a visitation from a member of our team. The list of schools that we visited this year is the same list of schools that we visited in the last two years. This is the last year of our current list, and we expect a new list from the State Department of Education this winter. This slide depicts the categories of grades served by the schools that we visited. We have a column listed for each local educational agency, and you can see the grades being served by the school itself. And there is a very diverse set of schools being visited across the county. That includes public and charter, as our superintendent mentioned. Similar to the pie chart you saw earlier, these, this chart represents the student ethnicities solely from the schools that we visited. So a little bit different in percentages, but the distribution is very similar to all schools in the county. And lastly, we have the summary of visits. As you saw in the letter that summarizes exactly what we look for in the visits, we have a sufficiency of instructional materials. Those are either textbooks, hard copies, or digital versions of those textbooks. We call that instructional material sufficiency. And we also conduct a facility visit that reviews the facility, the school campus itself. And those visits are ranked on a scale of four options, and you could see the summary for each local educational agency on this slide. And it concludes on the next slide. We also review the school's publicly available school accountability report card for accuracy, that it is current and updated. And we also monitor their percent of credentialed, credentialed teachers, which that data item we expect to receive from the State Department at the end of this month, by which I will submit the totals to Superintendent Estraya Henderson for your review as soon as that data is released. We, lastly, monitor the status of uni, any uniform complaints that might be presented to each agency. Those complaints are submitted by their, can I call them customers, anyone who's connected to the local educational agency. And we monitor to ensure that complaints are responded to and resolved in a timely manner. And that's the last column that you see listed on this slide.
So in the notice that you received and the results, the report, you will notice in Chart A were all of the schools that were identified for monitoring in each of the school districts and the charter schools. Again, the school name and the grades served. In Chart B, what you will notice is simply a summary of all of the data that Dr. Rogers already provided for you. And again, we do receive the percent of appropriately, appropriately credentialed teachers report from the California Department of Education later in the year, and I always submit a written report as a follow-up for you, so you have that. We're happy to answer any questions for you.
I can't see who's, for some reason. Yeah, we're still working on the vote. All right, go ahead.
We could do it the old-fashioned way.
Raise your hand.
That always works. Or just shout out loud. I mean, that's, either of that works. This is great information. I guess the, uh, the understanding where, so it's that last column, I don't know what's it, the one with the three big boxes, where you say schools where 15% or more of the teachers are holders of a permit or certificate, such as a short-term blah blah blah. Though, that refers to this chart, the last column, I gather. Or not the last column, but the one in, percent of appropriately credentialed teachers. Okay.
Yes.
Does absenteeism or truancy play a part in any of this?
It is not. It is not part of the Williams settlement.
Okay. So it's basically the plant, the instructional materials, and how many credentialed teachers you have there to actually teach?
And any uniform complaint, complaints that would have been submitted.
When you say uniform, you're not talking about tops and bottoms and shoes. You're talking about consistent complaints.
There's a Uniform Complaint Procedures Process. That's what the, that's what the process is called. And it refers to- And it refers to any complaints that would have been submitted by either students, the public, or parents in any of these specific areas.
Categories, okay. So, um, school plants that happen to be aged, um, that might need some updates, that does, that's okay. I mean, it seems that, because I can tell you in Vallejo, many of our schools are well over seventy, sixty to seventy years old and need some work, so.
The facilities inspection tool, the FIT tool that is used, is very specific in what the individual who is doing the process in facilities maintenance and operations is looking for. And Dr. Rogers, I'll turn that over to you. You're more familiar with what we would be looking for in those key areas.
Yes, it is very specific. And we use the standardized tool that's used statewide and provided by the Office of Public School Construction. So we ensure that we are going by what is listed here and no other added information. Some examples of things that we're looking for is overall cleanliness, interior surfaces, any electrical wires exposed, the status of restrooms, whether or not sinks and fountains are working, even in instances where the facility itself might be older. The most pertinent detail that we're looking to examine is for anything that's an emergent threat to safe and healthy of students and/or staff and faculty.
Do things like air conditioning and heating and leaky roofs fall into that?
Yes, air conditioning and heating. And so we are sensing for those nuances as we enter into the space, and it is a time of moment check. So in this moment, things are working and/or not working. The leaky roof, there would have to be evidence of it from an internal area of the campus, but it is a part of the review.
I see. And then you work, I gather, with the administration at each of the school sites?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
And the school district.
Oh, good.
To ensure that anything that was found, that in fact, there are, there have been purchase orders submitted or maintenance orders submitted to make sure that things are rectified and fixed in a timely manner.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Green light means go. So the question that I have is in terms of internet access to all the students, and does it work? A lot. Okay, just because I know sometimes when you have, you know, 400 computers working, sometimes the internet does not work in a campus. Do we, do we check anything for that at all?
So that's not an area that is actually part of the Williams settlement audit?
But to me, but to me, because we're going from not using textbooks and we're using a laptop, that that to me would come, mean that we are also looking at making sure that students do have access to material that just happens to come on a computer, so.
So during the instructional materials check, as I mentioned, it is a moment in time. And so for students who are in grades six through 12, we are able to verbally, of course, connect with them. And the question is very simple. Do you have access to the materials you need for this class, this course? And if they respond in the affirmative, we note it as working and sufficient. So it is as of that moment, and that's what we, we note down.
But the question doesn't come up on the facilities inspection tool, whether or not the internet, for example, is working on any given day.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it was done a long time ago, yeah. So some sort of an upgrade. Maybe we need to go back to the folks that went to court and got the Williams Act and say, maybe you need to upgrade it into the soon-to-be, you know, 22nd century, something along those lines.
It's a great opportunity for advocacy, certainly.
Very much so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone, and thank you for your work. I did have a question in reference to the 2024-25 visitation result summary. In the last block, it says number of unanswered complaints in relation to the Uniform Complaint Procedure. I noticed that there's three schools that has not app, applicable. And, and why is that? Do they not fall under this, or there was just no data available?
Thank you for the question, Supervisor Williams. For charter schools, charter schools are not required to have a uniform complaint process. We do have some charter schools in our county that do follow it, but it's not a requirement for them. And since it's not a requirement, we do not verify the status of its existence or their monitoring of complaints in that instance.
Do any of the charter schools voluntarily give that information, even though it's not required?
We are aware of some charter schools that have a uniform process to receive complaints, but that's the, the extent of our knowledge. We just know that it exists. We do not monitor it in any way.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
I got a couple of questions real quick. The first is, um, if a school is found to be out of compliance with issues in here relative to the, relative to the, um, school's infrastructure and hardscape. As we had several districts where they had issues around, uh, some had bonds passed and some had bonds that didn't. And so the construction and upkeep of schools is, is, um, is of issue in the county. Do these schools have a recourse if they don't have the funding available to be able to access some funding somewhere somehow? Does this, does this review open them up for eligibility to some type of funding to help alleviate those problems? What's the resolution, I guess is my question?
That's a good question. The school district has the responsibility to fix anything that may be out of compliance, especially as Dr. Rogers mentioned in terms of emergency repairs. And in fact, if there's anything that's found to be an emergency area, the staff, the team, is required to stay there and ensure that the issue is being rectified. If the issue isn't rectified, the emergency issue or instructional materials aren't provided, then the apportionment is actually withheld from the California Department of Education. So actually, apportionment is withheld until the school district does in fact fix the issue. So there aren't additional resources available for facilities repairs. The California Department of Education and the Fiscal Office, the Office of Fiscal Systems, is providing apportionment and resources to the school district. And these frankly are minimum standards, so they're not anything above and beyond. And one of the things that we note across the state is that every school is a Williams school. These are simply the schools that have been identified for an audit and a visit. But it is the school district's responsibility to have foundational facilities and instructional materials in place. And there, there aren't additional resources identified.
Okay. Just didn't make sense to me that we're gonna, and it was kind of a rhetorical question for me, asking, knowing before I asked, but doesn't make sense to me that we find that you need to fix something, you don't have money to fix something, so we're gonna withhold your money so that you can't fix something. Yeah, anyway, it's the state. That's all I got to say. No more questions, ma'am. Sorry. With that, I don't have any items from the public or submissions from the public for questions. So thank you very much for this presentation and this update.
Same time next year.
Yes, ma'am. There it goes, it reset. All right. With that, Madam Quirk, that brings us to item 15.
Receive a presentation by the Department of Resource Management on the NextEra Battery Energy Storage System AB205 opt-in application, which allows certain developers to apply for a permit directly through the California Energy Commission. Provide direction as to whether the board wants to request a host community agreement in the county's response to the CEC in lieu of the required Community Benefits Agreement Plan, and provide feedback on NextEra Energy Resources' proposed Community Benefits Plan outline and staff-recommended community benefit projects.
Thank you, ma'am. James, I'm assuming that you're gonna take this and run with it?
Attachment A, we just need to make a correction. On the second page of the attachment and then next to the last paragraph, we had listed the next, listed that paragraph as NextEra proposal. It is not the NextEra proposal. We wanted to scratch that. It's part of the case studies that we were using to go from. The final paragraph is what NextEra has put into their, their benefits plan outline. That's just clarification you want to turn off. Sure, second page. Yeah, where it says net, where it. No, on the attachment A. The next to the last paragraph says NextEra proposal. Scratch that. It's not NextEra's proposal. That is part of the case studies and the information related to the case studies. The last paragraph is actually what NextEra has brought forward as part of their Community Benefits Plan outline. So that's just a clarification. And then I wanted to welcome Eric Haxstrom. He's now officially an employee of Resource Management. He was originally our Civic Spark Fellow, and now he's a full-time employee with the county. He's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes. You guys have seen him quite a bit. But he's actually transitioned to his permanent role with the county as, as a planner. And so, and then I want to add, happy birthday to Holly, just. I know. Yeah, we wouldn't let him out. And then we want to wish happy, happy birthday to Holly. It's her birthday today, too. And then with that, I'm gonna turn it over to staff and go through the presentation.
Great. Well, thank you, Chairman Mashburn, Supervisors, Members of the Public, Alan Calder, Planning Manager here in Solano County. So today, I'm, we're here today, and I do want to acknowledge that actually it's a very collaborative effort bringing this staff report and presentation to you today. I think it's, there was a lot of hands on this effort, so I just want to be sure to acknowledge everybody that's worked on that, and you know who you are. Well, thank you much. So today is an opportunity to talk to you about these AB205 opt-in applications and the Community Benefits Agreement discussion. With that, I'll start in on a few background slides on this particular matter. So as, as you'll recall, on February 27th, the board started a countywide moratorium on BEST projects to allow staff to develop regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare, and, and really look at best management practices on BEST projects. There is a state opt-in process called AB205. This allows applicants to apply through an alternative permitting process through the CEC, which is the California Energy Commission. And this provides direct permitting and importantly bypasses local review. So I just want to emphasize, this is a state process that allows for permitting and does bypass local county regulations on this. So with that, I'll go into some more details here. But basically, this is an alternative permitting process that's new to us, and I think it's a fairly new process in the state as well. The Corby BEST proposal in front of us did come through the AB205 process. So it's a proposal for a 300-megawatt BEST project battery energy storage system in Solano County located on 40 acres of prime land with a generation tie or what they call a gen tie crossing the I-80 to connect to the PEGENE Vacca Dixon substation. Now, why this is important is not only do we have a Corby BEST proposal, but we've received a second proposal now as well. And there is a meeting this Thursday between staff and the CEC. And this is for what's called the Green Ridge Energy Vacca Dixon Power Center. And this is a second proposal that's on the PEGENE campus in the unincorporated area. And that is for a 57-megawatt, one-hour facility in addition to a 100-megawatt, four-hour facility. And because they basically have more than 300-megawatt hours in that proposal, they're able to come through the AB205 opt-in process. So the Corby facility is on Burns and Kill Kenny Road. It's reflected on this plan. With the blue squares and the purple square there, you can see that's the actually 40-acre location that is proposed for this BEST energy storage project, and it is on a 40-acre site of prime ag land. With regards to the opt-in process and the application, so the applicant, this is basically how this process typically works. The applicant provided a pre-application meeting with CEC staff, which includes the host jurisdiction, that's Solano County, and stakeholder agencies. We did have a host jurisdiction meeting with the Corby applicant on October 24th. And the CEC did host a meeting with the county as well as the applicant on October 2nd. So we've had a fair amount of dialogue with these two organizations. The applicant files an application which includes what's called a Community Benefits Plan, and that can be an outline of a plan. I'll go into that a little bit more in detail here in the presentation. The CEC has 30 days in which to deem a project complete or incomplete after it's been submitted. And this includes a period of time in which the host jurisdiction needs to comment on the project. Once the project is deemed complete by the CEC, there's a 270-day environmental impact report period. The applicant needs to demonstrate net positive economic impact. It's reviewed by the Department of Toxic, Toxic Substances Control, Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the Regional Water Control Boards. So with regards to NextEra's specific application process, as mentioned, there were a pre-filing meeting on October 2nd, as well as an applicant meeting on October 24th. With regards to community involvement going forward, the CEC awards permits required on, for construction. So the, the county's been asked to comment on this application and, and to check for compliance with existing what's called laws, ordinance, regulations, and standards. Those are called LORS as an acronym. As you know, we've got a moratorium on ordinance creation as well as a ag mitigation ordinance that's actually underway at the county. Neither of those are adopted, so they don't apply here as quote-unquote "LORS" that are evaluated by the CEC. The application filing, NextEra did file on November 4th, and so that does start a clock. That means within 30 days, there's a completeness determination by the CEC that needs to be made by December 4th. We, as a county, received the 2,500-page application and do need to respond within the next 20 days.
Alan, can you hold on one second? Supervisor Williams, did you want to ask a question?
I did want to ask a question because you had referenced that the county had, had opportunities to meet with the CEC. So on this particular slide, presentation, you indicate that it's 40 acres of prime land. And so I, my question is, were we able to articulate to the CEC how detrimental utilizing the prime land versus some other form of land to put this particular energy battery source system?
Thank you, Supervisor Williams. Yes, that's a good point. We did stress that. In fact, you know, there's, the numbers bear out that we're losing ag land on a regular clip. Over the last, you know, decade, it's been a fairly significant loss. And thus, the ag mitigation ordinance that we're working on to try to put into place with regards to some level of mitigation on loss of ag lands. We're looking at both prime and non-prime ag lands in that ordinance. This application precedes the adoption of that ordinance. But as you'll see, as we go forward here, there are some mechanisms in which to recoup compensation, perhaps, for the loss of some of that farm gate as well as ag land.
And, and I would add, in our discussions with, with the CEC and Corby, that we reiterated the fact that the general plan has a base of 1.5 minimum. We're letting them know that they We're letting them know that they can't hang their hats on 1.5 as we go through the process of our ag mitigation ordinance as well. So we put the one sort of notice that this is prime farmland, this is significant farmland, it has different designations within that, within that classification, and we're not going to, you know, necessarily say that it's a min, I mean, we're not going to stick with 1.5, we say it's a minimum, and that's where we start from.
Thank you for adding that content. And so when you had the community involvement, did they use or take advantage of the good neighbor policy?
I can take that one. So that's, the header on that slide says "community involvement," but that's really about the CEC's process prior to the filing of this application. And so there was one pre-application meeting that the CEC held with the county, the city of Acerville was there, and some of the other state agencies. Next Era did also have a meeting with county staff to talk very broadly about community benefits. But in terms of community involvement and kind of the good neighbor policy stuff, that comes into play, I guess, starting now, that they've submitted their application. They have to go through the CEQA process, they do have to host two community meetings, and so that's where that process will play out.
Okay, all right, I just misunderstood, wait, it was written like, whoa, I didn't hear about them using that, you didn't mention it. So it's something to come forward. All right, those were my only questions, thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. So again, with regards to the application filing process, although we do have a, basically a 20-day, technically a 30-day, but a 20-day window in which to respond to this application. For context, there's been two other AB 205 projects in the state of California prior to these, this application. And, and we've, they were batteries, sorry, they were solar projects rather than battery storage projects, and we understand that that completeness determination took over a year on each of those projects. So we may have a window of opportunity after this initial 30-day window to, to provide additional comments. Okay, so I'm going to walk you through two, two items here. Basically, in the AB 205 process, one is, this is a community benefit agreement, it goes by CBA. And secondarily, a follow-on slide is a host community agreement, two separate items here. The community benefits agreement is between the developer and a community-based organization specifying the benefits offered in exchange for the community's support of the project. This is a required component of the AB 205 applications. It can be introduced as an outline, and that's what we have received so far as an outline of, of this, a CBA. At least one signed agreement is a requirement with regards to the CBA before the CEC will issue a permit. So the local government, which is us, can be the community-based organization with which the community benefit agreement is reached under AB 205. Either as a CBA, which is, again, a community benefits agreement, or through a host community agreement. Now, a host community agreement is a little bit different. This is an agreement between the developer and the host jurisdiction to offset adverse effects of the host jurisdiction. So these, again, are two separate items. The CBA is required, and it's an arrangement between the developer and a nonprofit, basically. The host community agreement is between the developer and the county to offset any adverse effects on our jurisdiction. So for context, there's a couple of projects that we've researched throughout the country. This is a project in, was that Massachusetts? Yeah, that is a project of comparable size to the one that we're, that's underway here in our county. This is a 250-megawatt BES project, and as a result, that, that community of Medway actually secured over $43.5 million based on $173,000 per megawatt. So that was a deal struck in, in Massachusetts based on a very similar project of scope and scale to ours. Nationwide, there's solar and battery energy storage projects, and they have a national average of around $87,000 per megawatt. So when you run those numbers out, the Medway project, if, if we scaled our project to the $173,000 per megawatt, that would equal about a $52 million sum in our case. And if we based our project on the solar and battery storage fee of 26, oh, sorry, $87,000 per megawatt, that would be roughly a $26 million sum.
Alan, I have a question from Supervisor Brown.
Can you translate that all into numbers and money that I understand? And I don't mean that to, 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 all, I don't understand the 43 million, where did that come from? What does that translate into us? And the same thing with the 87 million. And I understand the first ones in Massachusetts, but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, Alan, if you can-
Sure, sure.
Is that taxable money that's coming in? Does that mean that we're lowering costs so that people can get their energy at a lower cost? And if so, is that all of Solano County? I'm just trying to figure that one out. So if you could elaborate greater, that would be nice.
Yeah, I'd ask Garrick to field that question there.
Okay rookie, you're on.
So for the, for the Medway project, most of that money is in a payment in lieu of taxes directly to the local government. But there were also several stipulations such as $150,000 to create a new position at the, at the fire department there to respond to battery energy storage fires, regular payments for trainings for first responders on how to respond, also funding for adjacent properties whose property value was devalued. Essentially, there were lots of different items in there that were attempting to address the negative impacts of the project on both residents and the host jurisdiction. And that's how we were able to total that, that 43 million, but a large chunk of it was just payment in lieu of taxes.
And it's meant, it's meant to show our relationship. This, this was a 250-megawatt, the Corby best is a 350-megawatt. It shows an example of what can be, can potentially be negotiated. But I see you have a question first, so go ahead and do that.
Well, it, okay, so this is my cynical self, and you guys know me well enough to know when I say this. It sounds like we're buying our souls to make this happen.
Or selling them.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's what, okay, I'm just, you know, like-
They're buying.
Well, somebody's, well, somebody's trying to. You know, like pay for, pay for play, or play for pay, however that works out.
That's exactly-
So yeah, that's, that's what it's sounding like, that it's good ag land, there's all sorts of other things which we haven't gotten into, but the point is, is that, you know, if you want this, then this is the exchange of gold and silver.
Well, the, the quirk to that, too, is a little even, even, go for it.
Really quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think I can make it kind of simple for us. So what it is, to break it down really, really simple, is that this company is going to end around, around this board to the state of California, who are going to cram this down our throat. Now, in them cramming this down our throat, there's one little caveat that we get, and that is that we get to make sure that our residents are partially made whole. And we get to hold them accountable and say, hey, you got to pay, right? So our job is to make a determination and an ask for how much and how we're going to use it, how it's going to be utilized. That's the two things we get to actually have a say in.
Well, the quirk is, is that we have the opportunity to talk about that.
But we don't actually get it, we just get to ask.
And the other quirk is that the CB, we use the two sort of acronyms of CBA and HCA. The CBA is what they brought forward in their outline. The quirk of the AB 205 is that it's the, it's the applicant who makes the determination of who they negotiate with and brings that forward. So although they could negotiate with us as part of the CBA, they don't have to do it with us. And in this instance, they talked to, I think, four or five different organizations. But their only requirement is to make an agreement with one of them, and they get to determine who they make the agreement with. So we, it, we're sort of a little bit out of the loop. It's where the HCA comes into play, and that's sort of what we're referencing here. These are, these are similar host community agreement things. And once they get through the process of get their completeness, and we can start having those more meaningful negotiations, that's the opportunity that we potentially have for, for this element. But the key here is, is that to get them through the completeness, they really only need to reach out to one organization, nonprofit, strike an agreement, and put that into their plan, and obviously, we get to comment on that and go through that. But that's part of the reason why we're here today, is that, obviously, for this process, we want to have some input on what the, what we feel are the, the community benefits that are out there, and the organizations that they work with. And then secondarily, as we go through our moratorium and our ordinance, we want to be able to structure them so that we define a better or potentially stronger method of dealing with the community-based agreement, so that's-
So I just, thank you, because I want to just let everybody know that. And when I was reading through all this, that's exactly what I thought, my thought was. And it sounds like another group that kind of went away for a few minutes, kind of thing. It's this, and I, and I, whoever, I'm going to look through whoever decided that this was good at the state level, because I shouldn't have to sell my soul to make sure that our people are taken care of. And that's kind of how I'm feeling right now, so that, I just needed that out there. Because I've got, I've got some other things I'm going to put into the record, too.
Yep, we're all trying to work through the CEC process, it's very new. I think in our interactions with the CEC, I think they're intending to do some good, right? The intention is to try and figure out, because these things are necessary. I mean, not where they, where they put them is where we have the, sort of the say, right? And that's the key. The state has identified that there's a need, PEGENE has identified there's a need in order to provide the continuity of services and things like that. It's where they get places, where the critical thing is, and, and that's where we're here to try to, to help get the board to understand and help get to that process.
All right, we got a lot of lights up here, Supervisor Anigan.
And I know you're not finished with your presentation, but doesn't it look like you got a lot of meat left? And this is really probably the point where it should end. So, given that what is being proposed is a 300-megawatt facility, correct? And what you've put into the staff report of what HCA agreement was reached, one of the key things here is it says, "over the life of the project." How long are these projects supposed to live?
20 to 30 years is generally-
20 to 30 years. So, given the example you put into the staff report, what does that look like, given that this project is 300 megawatts? And it's, let's just say 30 years, let's just give them the benefit of the doubt, it's going to last the full life. What does that look like for, what's the millions of dollars, what does that number look like?
Our, our rough calculation Supervisor, is 52 million.
52 million, okay.
Yeah, and that's over, say, a 20 to 30-year period.
I think what's interesting, and maybe it's just how it's juxtaposed, is the, you, you guys have us batting around 200,000.
What, that's-
Oh, so what is the 200,000 dollar?
That's the, that's the pittance that was offered to the nonprofits locally. Yeah, that's what they said, they're looking, they're fishing for a nonprofit to sign off and say, oh, I'll, we'll make an agreement with you. And there's a list of nonprofits there, some of them is, as low, I think, as 10, $10,000 to make an agreement so that this application can move forward.
That's-
So these are companies that are going to make hundreds of millions of dollars.
Yeah, and I think, I think that-
And they're willing to offer $10,000 to a local charity to sign off on.
And to the Chair, I think, I think that's what's missing, is I have no idea how much money a BES is going to make in this site. So there isn't a number here that tells it, right? I don't see a number. The only number I see is the HCA number of 43 million and some change.
So it-
So how do we?
If I'm reading this right, I'm sorry, I can't help myself. If I'm reading this right, they make 87, $87,000 a megawatt, right? Or somebody did, give or take, and 300 megawatts, and they, they, they upload an awful-
A year or a day?
300 megawatts a day, right? Back into the grid.
So let's work on what those numbers look like. Do you have a chart that shows that?
Ultimately, a lot of that information is proprietary, you know, they're, they're a private company.
Yeah, they won't tell you.
They, they aren't able to-
I know, but what do we know? What are we able to grab from the information we-
What we know is what Medway agreed to.
Okay.
We know one, right? We have a case study, and we know one.
Valuation of a megawatt.
Yes, absolutely, the 200,000 is shocking compared to what Medway got at 43 million.
Right.
So that is what we are bringing forward to you today to say, hey, wait a minute, this is what Next Era proposed. We don't think that is in any way adequate. The only thing that we do know, because as Eric said, their profit, their own, their own books, that's all proprietary. But what we know is that they entered into one agreement, and at a 250-megawatt project, that negotiated agreement was 43 million and change, right? Ours is bigger, we know that. So now we're coming to you to say, what direction do you want to give to staff to move forward on this? Because we think what they offered was insulting. And so we would like direction from you on how we move forward.
And, and to the point of the 200,000, again, that's the quirk of the AB 205. We were not involved in that process. The applicant is responsible for reaching out, and those five or six groups they reached out to for the 200,000, that was between the applicant and those groups through the CEC process. We were outside of that process. They, they present those, those to us, and we have opportunity now to comment on those, and that's to Burn's point. Our goal here is to get an understanding, obviously, we're reading the temperature of the room, and you're not happy with that. So that's obviously going to be one of the comments that we bring forward when we submit comments to the, to the CEC. But additionally, we want to understand how we structure going forward, how we, because we, as, as Alan just indicated, we just got another application that has showed up, we have a pre-application meeting on Thursday with the CEC. And so that's, that'll be the second one in less than a month that has popped up on our radars through the state.
Okay, so I'm not done with my questions, if you don't mind, I'm sorry Chair.
No, I just had a follow-on question based on what he said that might be relevant.
Okay, so get it-
So, well, I want to know if, so that's all, if they have paid through the CBO, but what if we say we want to be the host organization? Can we then tell them, hey, forget the 200,000, we want 43 million?
No, we want 52 million.
You cannot mandate, you cannot mandate the host agreement.
What's that?
You cannot mandate-
It's one or the other.
They get to pick?
It's after, the host agreement can come, the host agreement can still happen after the fact, but that's, that's a separate process as we go through-
But for purposes of the application process, it cannot be required. A community benefit agreement is required, they have to have at least one of the community benefits.
Right, I, I get that, right? And so, and they're going to cram, the state is going to let them cram that down our throat, right? They're going to find a nonprofit out there. My question is, how do we get to the 52 million? Do we then, after their application is approved, get to move into the host process and tell them, hey, we want our 52 million dollars for our residents?
Okay. I don't think so, and if, because if they get through and they get the community benefit agreement blessed, then at that point in time, negotiating period is over.
Checkmate.
Right? I mean, so, so our, our, our ask of you is how to put the county in the best negotiating position to say, this is the impact, and that, that we can make an argument to the state when one nonprofit comes forward with a $10,000 check, and we say that is not adequate to, to mitigate the impact on the community. That's what we're looking for today.
Okay, so I'll continue. So that works out to be about 1.733 million dollars per year, if you're going off of the 52 million dollars. 200,000 is far short of that number. So this is a shout-out to all the nonprofits out there, don't make an agreement, right, with the best. I mean, really, that should be the headline, Todd, don't make an agreement. But, I mean, I mean, and just thinking about this in terms of the county's perspective, there's a lot we could do with 1.7 million dollars, having experience doing a lot with 1 million dollars, right? Because this does not have ties, this is discretionary money. Except, I guess we could say what it is we'll be putting money towards, such as radio inoperability and, you know, other, other initiatives. But that'll be fully funded within no time, if we could get this agreement. I think that's what's missing in this conversation, is, you know, we're all sort of sitting out there going, well, how much money is it worth? I mean, 200,000 doesn't sound like much at all, but if you're starting from zero and you don't understand what the full dollar amount is per year that this company is going to be receiving for the storage. And I don't think, it doesn't make sense to me, I guess somebody could probably put together a wind plan showing where the wind goes, but, you know, this is out in ag land, it isn't like we have homes surrounding those-
Oh, yeah, you do, all around it.
Well, I was looking at the photo, what's the photo, where's that slide?
They're old, they're little 40 and 10-acre pieces, so what, there may not be a thousand homes around it, but there are homes around that.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
There are people who could absolutely be affected, in my district.
Right across the street from it.
No, I'm sure, that's why I said a wind thing, so I think there is some consideration that has to be put in for that. That's kind of a crappy deal, actually, for, for counties, if, because it takes us out of the, the mix of the conversation potentially.
Could do it to a city, too.
Yeah, they could, they could.
Oh, sure.
Right in town, they could do it down in Vallejo and Merr Island.
For municipalities is maybe what I should have said, instead of being very specific to the county.
I'm just saying.
So I think this is an interesting conversation, not one I'll be involved in at the end of the year, but, all right, let's go ahead, finish it up, I'm done with my questions.
You know, I would also just bring to your attention the fact that not only best projects, but commercial solar can come this path, too.
Yeah.
AB 205, FYI.
So, unrelated but unrelated, I would like to know, from staff, if it's possible, if you can find out, or I, my staff will find out somehow, if, if any of our state legislators for our county voted in an affirmative for this legislation that allows them to go around us, and that is now allowing them to do bad things to our citizens? I'd be curious to know that.
Be curious to know what CSAC's stance was on it.
Yeah.
Because we're all, all about local control.
Yes, because this is just another bite.
The annual meeting's next week, so it's a great time to ask questions about it.
John, you're next up for questions here before.
Yeah, more, more statements and questions, anyway. You know, the term "host," what a terrible term is, if we're going to host this event. Like, we invited people to come put a, a battery storage facility out in ag land. And who's going to carry the burden of this? Ag will. I don't care if the mitigation, yeah, all you're doing is conserving land that's already in ag to begin with. It doesn't add any more, any more acres to. And as Alan said earlier, the consumption of ag land continues to go on and on. And here you've got the state who's telling us, "By 2030, they want 30% of the land conserved." Those are mixed messages. It's a night we're going to have a, you know, a workshop or a presentation on the salt grant about how to conserve ag land, how to take this prime land, prime being the ability to grow something on it, whether it's primed by, by a soil study or primed in that it is, you can put something else that helps grow ag products. So, this is no different than the tunnel. The tunnel has a community benefit program, too. "Oh, look at what we're going to leave you. We're going to leave you, you know, 13 or 14 pyramids of muck, and new roads, and some old buildings that you can take over in the future." And, so I don't know, so, in, if it's a 20-year lifespan of the, of the, of the facility, does it continue after that, if they repower it?
You know, I, I would say, Supervisor, that, that's part of our.
Well, they own the land, so they're not leasing it.
Yes.
It becomes like the windmills, you know, we, after a while, we couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah, that was part of our intention to get the ordinance right, and a big part of that is the decommissioning aspect of it.
Yeah.
Is returning that land to its original production.
So they've got to put some money up front, just like we do with Monozumo Wetlands, so that you can reclaim the land. But I'm going to tell you, after they put all that on there, they harden that ground so, up so much, yes, taking off the, you know, the, the concrete and the gravel and all that, I don't know that you're going to leave much of good land left, because they'll have to take out maybe a couple feet of topsoil to get, to get rid of all that. Even if we do get some money, I think it should be, it should support agriculture itself. That, ag is bearing the load of all of this. And how big a circle of impact is there? Is it a mile out? Is it two miles out?
I'm sorry, can you rephrase that question there, Supervisor?
Well, that facility's going to be there, right? What's the potential impact if something happens? Is it a mile out? Is it two miles out?
I mean, from a fire standpoint, potentially, I mean, it could be broader than that, if, if it has, it's left to burn.
Okay, so, but what about all the ditches along the roadway that carry stormwater? You know, how do they mitigate for all of that, to contain anything that would happen on-site, so it doesn't travel out?
And, and you know, that's the unfortunate part of this. That permitting happens through the state.
Yeah.
It's not our local regs that are governing those decisions.
Well, let's don't give them an encroachment permit, and they can't get on the road.
There's been an encroachment project, an encroachment permit rejected already by agency.
We can do, like, City of Acquaville, take four years to give them a permit. Our Brown Street project. And that was just for water line and sewer line. This is, this is bad law. And like Supervisor Mashburn said, you know, who authored this stuff? I, you get excited about having, you know, more energy, but Jesus, the consequences are not even considered. Agriculture's the one that suffers. All the operations around there are going to change, even under construction. There's going to be impacts, you know, when people are trying to get their crops out, and they've got gravel trucks and excavating equipment and everything else going on all the time, just the quality of life, those people who live around there. And there's, there's a neighbor just right across the street. And the other thing, they've owned that land maybe three or four years, they haven't done a thing with it, so they've left it fallow. You know, we got no farm gate off of that, yet it's good ground. They ripped out a whole amen orchard just to be able to have that bare ground. Those, those weren't questions, those weren't statements.
Supervisor Williams, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm going to also agree with Supervisor Vasquez. We're definitely not the host community. We're a host jurisdiction, and ag will suffer the most. And, well, touching on that, this is my ax. As more entities are purchasing ag land, is there any type of mechanism in place that will flag us so that we can start reaching out to these agencies and maybe start having conversations with some of these realtors, you know, when they're selling this ag production, that they understand that, you know, prime ag land should not be sold if it's not for ag production? Because once you lay that concrete down, that, that soil is gone. We can't get that back. And, and so I wanted to know that, and, and have we, as a county, have we identified locations within the county where we can give recommendations for these agencies, since they're going to supersede what we've put in place and going to use that AB 205? Have we gotten to that point where, when we see someone with an application, seeing if we can, I see us do all the time, swapping land. If they bought some prime ag, can we offer them, you know, some other type of land that's not considered prime, where they could put these facilities if they're going to circumvent what we've put in place as a county? Because our goal is that we're here to protect our community, the people that live here, our, our farmers. This is very serious, and so we take this seriously when we have entities coming in and just not being willing to wait for us to identify locations for them. But I just want to know, where are we in that process so that we can get ahead of this as much as possible?
Yes, Supervisor, you know, it's, it's not unlike the acquisition of lands we saw over the last, since 2018, right? Very similar. We, we, we get, you know, notice through our assessor's office. We, we can see mapping of ownership, et cetera, but we, we really don't have a mechanism, mechanism in place to prevent it nor trade for highest-quality ag lands at this.
I would note on that, that we, we've also informed folks what the zoning and general plan were for those areas. So they were well aware of what they were getting into, but, you know, obviously, they had intentions of something different. State legislation like this really does undercut us and our local objectives.
You know, our goal through our ordinance process will be to identify some of the best practices with regards to land use. What we're doing with the ag mitigation is, will assist in that process. And so, the, the goal would be to try to provide a better, informed platform for placement of these, but as far as us being able to restrict them from putting them in a certain location, the best that we could probably do is go through the ordinance process and work on, you know, obviously, working with the public, working with you, working with subject matter experts to find the best solution for these things that, when they do happen.
I just wanted to add, and thank you for that clarification. And then, since this is coming out of the state, then we have legislators that we need to have some conversations with about putting something in place to help us, to protect our county, because they're, that's what they're elected by this county to do. So, I say we need to go to them and have some conversations on how do we put something in place that's geared to counties, especially those with prime ag land, to protect them, because it's about protecting that and making sure that the communities, that they're not getting so close to communities where they're at risk. So that's what I just want to make those suggestions and recommendations. And we definitely need to put something in place to trigger something for us so that we can combat what, what's happening. And I, I agree with Supervisor Hanigan, we need the max amount, she already came up with a figure, $52 million. I'm definitely in agreement with that, and, and I really hope that our, our nonprofits just don't go for the $200,000. That's not, that's nothing.
James, I wanted to ask you.
Thank you.
Bill, your mic's, oop. There isn't really much of a precedent right now under this legislation, right? We're like one of the first cases that's coming through, so it's our opportunity, not only for us, but for other jurisdictions that are going to experience a similar sequence that we're seeing here.
Yeah, the, the critical hole in the legislation is this, is, is around the community benefits. The fact that, that an applicant is the one that determines what the, the community benefit is and goes through the state for that, it completely bypasses us. So obviously, it's critical for us, as we go through this process, we're going to comment very clearly, we've heard very clearly, provide comment on the inadequacy of what we see from that process, also push for a host community agreement. We're going to push for that. I think one of the things we've seen from the previous two applicants that have gone through, though, is that the CEC is willing, at least, to listen to the local jurisdiction. And so, you know, the two previous examples, that even though it's a 30-day process, right, the, the state, or the CEC has an obligation and a requirement to provide either a go, no-go in 30 days. The two previous projects have taken over a year. So just imagine, that's a process of 30-day application, 30-day review, reject. And you do that for basically 12 times before you get to a process, a project that potentially the state or the CEC is going to approve. So I'm hopeful, in that sense, that we have the opportunity here to go through that process, have a voice, and part of the reason we're here today is really to get an understanding, not only of understanding that you don't like the, that process of where they are with the community benefits agreement, but understanding what are, what are critical for you. And when we put some items within, I think we have a slide that's coming up next that shows some of the things that we've heard and would bring forward, like radio interoperability, you know, shoring up our fire defenses and responses, things like that. Those will all go forward as comments that we take to the state and clearly indicate to them that loss of prime agricultural land is, is very critical in this key area of, of, of the state, actually, or critical.
But it's not just that 40 acres, it's everything around it's going to change, because you're going to have that facility out there, and there's going to be people that are maybe not so sure they want to farm that land around it.
Can I just, real quick, with regards to the ag mitigation ordinance, just remind everybody that you adopted it last week, and it goes into effect 30 days after the adoption, so it's going to be in effect December 6. The issue is, comment period closes with regards to, as Alan was talking about, the lures for this 30-day. Hopefully, as Mr. Vezik just said, you know, they'll deem this application no-go, and we'll then start a new 30-day clock. At that point in time, the ag mitigation ordinance will be in effect. So I just want to point that out, that it will be coming. It does not necessarily apply now. Definitely in our comments back, we will make note of it, that it is not yet in, in effect, but it goes to Supervisor Vasquez's point. That only applies to that particular land. That, that is what is paved over, taken out of production. It does not go to the surrounding ones. And we can continue to look at ways to, if there's needs, as we talked about, shoring up that ag mitigation ordinance, we can try, but that's definitely something that's out there.
I just want to conclude my, my comments. I definitely want us to sound alarmed. We need to make sure CSAC knows. I think Supervisor Hanigan and I will be in attendance next week. Anything you can give us that we can get to them, I would appreciate that. And I'm asking you at RCRC, get them involved, and we just need to let the other counties know, because we definitely need us to come together to push back on this for some new legislation, to shore up those gaps, and give us back some type of control over these issues. And I'm going to conclude with that. Thank you very much for listening.
Supervisor Brown, you.
This is for the record. When I was reading the staff's suggestions and I'm looking at tier-one priorities, and then I went to the second line that said coordinated response to thermal runaway. What the blank is a thermal runaway? So I'm going to read it to you. Thermal runaway in batteries is a dangerous chain reaction that occurs when a battery's temperature increases rapidly, causing a chemical reaction that produces more heat. This process can lead to a battery catching fire, exploding, or emitting toxic gases. Before I keep going, I would think Prop 65 would come into play to some of this. This event will occur, will therefore occur more often for big batteries and for products that are made in big quantities. An example, it is estimated that one Tesla battery out of every 10,000 will undergo an internal short circuit linked to an error in the manufacturing process. When a battery experiences thermal runaway, it can emit fumes containing toxic gases like hydrogen fluoride, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, and various volatile organic compounds, which can be harmful to inhale and may include potential carcinogens like formaldehyde, depending on the battery chemistry. Exposure to these fumes can cause respiratory issues and other health complications, depending upon concentration and duration of exposure. Other toxic gases can include various hydrocarbons like methane, ethanol, and acids like phosphor, hopefully that's close enough, fluoride, and other harmful chemicals, making the fumes highly dangerous to inhale. It kind of reminds me of some of our refineries, and when they do things they're not supposed to do, that means we cannot use the land to even just grow your car, your garden for the summertime. So I wanted to put that out there. So, reading through the rest of the tier priorities, it mentions that we should provide emergency management training, and it has fire department, like Singular. No, you're going to need every fire department, anybody who wants to be a fireperson, to have whatever it is they need in terms of what they need to put this out? And wasn't there something, some, something that shut down I-80? Was it like six months ago? Something like that? And so, this is.
Tesla diesel truck.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Or one of the.
Satellites.
Whatever it was, I'm glad I wasn't on I-80 that day. But the bottom line is that it, it's even more than everything that we've talked about. This can then spew across where all of those people are living, let alone that land maybe might not ever come back. And this is just the beginning. That doesn't mean it might not happen in Vallejo, Benicia, parts of Fairfield, you know, Dixon, Ria Vista, is, there's, there's a whole lot out there. And, and, and why? When it's going to kill, it's going to eventually kill people. You breathe some of this stuff in, guys, you hurt your lung tissues, you, you don't come back. That was the whole thing with COVID. Once that, then, once the sacs are destroyed, they don't regenerate. It's not like your liver, so.
I thought mustard gas was bad.
Well, yeah, exactly, exactly. And so, it's, well, and then there was, hold on, there's some other things I wrote down, just real fast. So, then the other thing is that, where's the liability insurance? Is that going to be coming into any of this? Because if there's going to be a, a group that's going to be in our sphere, not necessarily sphere of influence, then where do we have, where's the liability insurance? How are they going to contain any of this? Let's see, oh, earthquake, so that was my favorite one. Does, and what does that mean, that it goes over I-80? Slide seven, I think it was slide seven that has the map?
Yes.
That it goes over I-80?
Yes.
Yeah. So what happens if there's an earthquake and, and you're going over I-80? What, what would that mean? I don't know. What would be the collapse of, of that bridge or something? Give me some.
Power lines.
Yeah, okay, it's a power, okay.
High tension power lines.
Okay, so I'm just trying to, I, there's going to be earthquakes, so I just want to know what, what would that mean? And again, the liability insurance, and that should not be coming out of our pocket.
Interesting, Monica, if you look at this, leaving the proposed BES.
Yes.
Area, that little, when it makes that jog there, it now enters the City of Acquaville.
Oh, my.[1759.62]
It's one of the things that I wanted to point out is.
See, see that little, so it's heading west. But it's up on the screen. When it makes that first. No, yeah.
Yes.
And when it makes that first jog and crosses the road, it now enters the city of Acable. That's in the city limits of Acable, that orchard.
And so then the other part that I would like to point out, while everybody's got their attention on that map, is that if you go directly across from that to the southwest, you can see where the freeway is, you see I eighty coming down? Right where I eighty leaves that picture is Leisure Town. There are eleven hundred homes full of seniors right there. Less than, less than two miles away, as the wind blows, and it blows there every day, I can tell you I live over there, not in Leisure Town, but close.
But soon.
Yeah, soon. Hey, oh, thanks. Blows, he got it, he got it. Blows, blows right across that. Or if the wind happens to be blowing to the to the northwest, then you have all of North Village, which is over fifteen hundred homes and an elementary school.
Which is why the city project got shut down.
It's why the city project got shut down, right? So when we talk about the 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 radius that's affected by those poisonous gases that you were just talking about, and the potential for that, and the potential for impact to citizens, there you go. It's on the map.
So what's what's critical for us in in the discussions we've already had is that battery technology continually changes and it's it's improving. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to be as flat-lined as possible. The battery technology is improving.
It's gonna.
And we're and we're stuck with, we'll be stuck with this, whatever technology they installed for thirty years. So our comments in the pre-meetings and in discussions, and obviously going forward, probably another thing is, is that, you know, find the safest, you know, most usable technology out there to minimize thermal runaways, minimize impacts from earthquakes. And so part of, you know, what we will be stating is to is to think about the technology you're going to use. It may cost a little bit more initially, but that that ultimately is a benefit to the community if you're going to reduce the amount or potential of what you have with the with toxicities and things that impact the public. So it will be one of our comments as well as we go forward.
Before you call, Aaron, could I, just a quick one. So are we looking as to where they're manufactured?
Oh, do we have a way to state, you you're talking about domestic versus foreign?
No, where these battery packs are being built and shipped over here. Is it China, is it India? How do we know the quality of work that goes into those? Huh? No, I don't think we build them here.
If I recall correctly, they're PoWen batteries, which is a Chinese company that does most of its manufacturing in China.
But we have no way of of knowing, other than they will stamp it and say that it's it's been inspected and it's one-hundred percent okay.
Yeah, so they they, those batteries have to be compliant with a U L listing called U L nine five forty.
Yeah, all it is is a stamp.
Well, there's, there's, there's some processes there where.
Oh, there are, huh?
There's fire testing required, where we can get our fire departments to be involved in that fire testing and understand exactly.
Once they're here?
No, before they receive their.
We're going to go over to China and do that?
No, no.
My big worry is that it's a tax and they all go look.
Well, they're going to, they're going to send one battery pack that works.
Yeah.
And it's going to get retested and retested and retested. It's, that's an old industry scam that's gone on forever.
So just, just to clarify, so everyone has an idea of what that U L nine five forty A fire testing is, is when they deliberately do thermal runaway in the exact battery pack that will be deployed here. And then they test things like chemical exposure at different radiuses from that fire. And and fire departments will see that firsthand and and have that experience.
And that methodology is the toolkit that we really, really only have. That's what you're pointing to is a far more rigorous evaluation, which is not necessarily in the in the methodology.
But we should be calling for it.
Sure.
We should know that whoever testing them, in whatever country they're being built, that they, not just certify, that they prove that those things are safe. Hell, they'll adulterate honey.
And I can share that.
Chip it to us as one-hundred percent raw proof.
Through the Technical Working Committee that we've established, Eric and team have been really pulling in some incredibly high-end expert consultants to guide us on a number of fronts. Robin Raines has done heavy lift on on her involvement as well. And so we're, we're learning an awful lot in this process, I must say. I I did just want to reiterate one other matter here, is that with regards to this host community agreement, we will be setting the bar, to Bill's point and and James's point, for future projects. And and just a reminder that there is a second application in now as well.
Yeah.
So it it's important we get this right, and that's why we are here today.
Aaron, you had another.
Alan, when we put up the slide, go to slide number nine. There you go. As we're talking, I mean, this is some of the things we were talking about within the within the framework.
Yeah, I did, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I mean, I think to your point, John, I think it is important that we get some clarification on the testing. I mean, from what I'm, what I'm learning, is they're going to have wheelbarrows of money coming in that, you know, certainly they could afford to pay for upgraded technology. Do we know how many Bess systems are in the state at this point? Do we have an idea?
Not, not a numerical number, but it's, it's more than a gigawatts worth of energy that gets stored at one time.
Gigawatt, a gigawatt, so multiple facilities. If this is three hundred.
Thousands of megawatts, yeah.
So if this is three hundred megawatts, how many megawatts make a gigawatt?
One thousand.
One thousand, okay.
Three or four.
Sounds like Back to the Future.
The flux.
I'm not going back to school, I'm just going to tell you that. Yeah, I think that's interesting. I, I, so when you're talking about setting the standard, I mean, do we set a, this is the amount of money we want every year for each megawatt? I mean, what what is, what does that look like? I know it is, I know you want us to get to what is it we want to do with it? But what is the amount of money we're talking about doing things with? You know, what are we proposing to, what are we negotiating at? What's our starting point?
So the highest part, and if Eric or Alan want to go through that, want to talk about what the actual numbers related to them are, but obviously a consolidated dispatch center.
I guess, I guess backing, going backwards, how do we get to one-point-seven-five million dollars every single year?
Oh, wow.
Right? I mean, that's, that's what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, so Supervisor, as as mentioned, this is our benchmark to date, is this Midway project.
Mm-hmm.
And they based it.
It's a good one.
They based it on, obviously, it's comparable size, two-hundred-and-fifty megawatts to our three hundred, but they did base it on a megawatt, per megawatt price. And 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 when they broke it down that way, that was the one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars per megawatt.
Okay.
And that times the three hundred equals fifty-two million.
So how long ago was that project proposed? Or when was it put in place? Last year, two years ago?
If I recall, it was permitted in twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two. So inflation, we can jump it up. So we're looking at one-point-seven-five million dollars?
We're looking at two.
Okay, two, I'm good with two. Two's good. We've got a lot of projects and a lot of nonprofits that could benefit from two million dollars, more than two-hundred thousand dollars a year. So is that a number we're talking about? Or are you going in cold with a, with a negotiation?
We're not at the point to go through the negotiation.
Okay.
Because that, I mean, we have to get Next Era to agree to even talk about the host, the hopes, host agreements with us.
Right.
It's not a guarantee, but that's, that's going to be sort of the the push that we'll have. And we have to actively hope that the C E C partners in that regard and agrees that there is, there is some necessity to deal with that. So it it does go back to Supervisor Williams' comments about, we really need to be leveraging our legislators and C S A C and really put pressure on the C E C to make sure that the process is fair, equitable, and beneficial to the local communities who are going to bear the brunt of the impacts.
So you're saying that happens parallel with the conversations with Next Era?
It, it's, well, that's part of the, sort of the oddities with this process. It's, it's as being the guinea pigs, we're, we're sort of learning that process. The the key point right now is that 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 the applicant needs to get the the confirmation from C E C that their project can go forward. Then we go through the A R process, we can go through the host community agreement process. We can go for the, through some further definition of benefits. We can also talk about some of the other critical technology requirements and safety requirements and other concessions that we're looking for to make sure that this is, that if this becomes a viable project, it is most beneficial. So that is, that's sort of the next steps. Part of the, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, essentially, when I walked in here today, I thought it was, you pick these projects or those projects. I think at the end of this conversation, or at least at this point in the conversation, I'm thinking, we decide what is that number we want every single year out of this project? And then we know the things we want, we want to do and finish and complete and add to, I mean, twenty and thirty years, that's a long time. You know, we'll have radio inoperability two-point-oh during that time, possibly. So what, I mean, is the goal to say we want these things in it, or this amount of money? Or?
I think, I think what.
Kind of confused what you're asking us to do.
So, can we go to that slide? Because the the high priority ones are the things that that staff has heard from the board in the discussions of what's critical and important, the dispatch, things like that. We're utilizing those as a baseline for what the valuation of those are, so we can understand how we fit those into a, into sort of a project to to get those covered. It's really a baseline. It it's really, it's setting the parameters of if we do negotiate those funds, how we can allocate them to the different priorities that the board decides that are community benefits.
Okay.
I think that some of these things, you know, obviously, I I would try to be as creative as possible and argue with them that these not, these aren't necessarily, or not only community benefits that have, that should have a monetary value to them, they're common sense approaches that should be their baseline on, before we even talk about community benefit reimbursement. Some of these things, like a consolidated dispatch, is critical, because if they're creating an issue where.
Right.
It needs a response, and that system should be shored up to deal with that type of process, program, problem. So I think that for us, we want to understand the critical nature of what you want to see that are benefits, but we don't need to have that now. We wanted to open that dialogue. We have a clear understanding that we're looking for a good sum of money per megawatt that we want to use as a baseline to set the valuation for this going forward and use that as we do the, through these other processes.
Okay.
And obviously, through this process, we are going to have to come back. We have to come back with our ordinance that that we want to bring forward. And obviously, we will have to bring back progress to you on this project, and then the next application, we're getting ready to go through, same thing.
I appreciate on this list, you're including insurance bonding for decommissioning of the facility, because I think that's really important. We never think about that end use, you know, let's, we can talk about glass bottles and and aluminum cans, you know, like what, plastic bags? We don't, we have no idea what happens to them after their use. I mean, somebody'd have to commit, convince me that, you know, reducing electricity rates or providing discounts for people who are close by, that that's a, that that, I mean, I think we all want our, if we had our own utility, I'll talk about it again. We we could offer reduced rates, I bet.
That, that's the, sort of the nexus there, in the sense of, it goes back to the original statements that we've heard the board state before. The it, this is a resource that is being exploited. It's leaving the community, it's leaving the county once it gets set up.
Yeah.
And so there should be some benefit to the the people who live here and have to deal with it. So I think that's where that reduction in rates comes in, because it's, it's an opportunity to at least get some valuation from that commodity that's that's harvested.
Right, well, I would think if we could put the money into creating our own electricity system and reduce rates for everybody in the county, that would be a a better goal.
Part of the, part of their dialogue has been is that for them to affect some forms of infrastructure improvements that allow us to, say, do some work up in the I A S area up in Dixon, and and actually do development that brings benefit, set up enhanced or expanded capacity within P G and E's lines, so that projects that come in that do need access to electricity.
Ah.
It it's available to them. So that is part of some of the discussion that we want to have and and push for.
Yeah, I think that that would be something I could go for more, is that how are we helping ourselves?
Building.
In order to put in, you know, economic development projects, in order to, you know, reduce electricity costs for people in our county, in order for, you know, again, anybody who could come in and wants to put a business or or housing development has access to the electricity at the time they want, they need it, not with P G and E's, you know, see you in three years or five years or whatever their timeline.
It's like creating a local pool of of capacity that we don't have right now, I think.
Exactly. This is another way you could do it.
Yeah, so.
Based on if you're talking about expanding the lines to include more electricity through.
So for us, this dialogue is critical, because it it does provide us confirmation that that at a minimum, you agree with these aspects of it, and that's a good baseline to begin with. Obviously, as you come up with other thoughts or anything, in this, in this dialogue here, we can have that. If you come up with something later that you want to think about, bring it forward to staff so that we can add it to the arsenal and go through the process.
I don't know if this is as high a priority, but based on the discussion earlier about ag mitigation, I know we have the ag mitigation ordinance that will likely be in effect, but you may want to have, based on the impact, it's it's cumulative in terms of the surrounding areas and such, we may want to have as a bullet there, additional agricultural mitigation, which could be a fund essentially to help agriculture. So it's another one I would think we might want to put in that priority list.
Stealing my thunder, Bill. It's all right. No, it's okay, it's good.
I was going to say that, so I was going to sign language.
So, I'm, I'm, but I am going to, are you, you go ahead, Aaron. Okay, then I'm going to, I don't have a button to push to get to talk, so I'm just going to insert myself.
There's a reason.
Yeah, I know. Man, I can't get a break today. Couple of things. First, I'd like to point out, is Next Era in the room? Is Next Era here? Did they come to see the public when the public came to talk to them about this? Apparently not. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. These folks are coming here, pillaging a resource, trying to do bad things to our public, and they ain't even here, can't show their face. Okay, that's it. Now that they're poking pins in their Mitch doll.
Feeling the pain yet?
Right? So the next thing that I, that I wanted to get to say is that when you look at this list, one of the things that comes to mind is that we, as a county, have been trying for a while now, thanks to you and Jim, although it didn't come to fruition, to consolidate our rural fire. Because the response to this is going to be rural fire. So when you condense, or you, or you consolidate rural fire, rural fire departments, everybody, you get a consolidated dispatch. You get training for all of the first responders that is the same across the board. You get the opportunity and the ability to have equipment that is standardized across the board for all of those things. So if we were going to get fifty-two million dollars, right, when you guys were trying to get a tax, we were looking at, what?
Nine.
Nine million dollars to be able to consolidate the three? Imagine what we can do that is significant for this county and its citizens, when you're talking about a community benefit. If we could take that money that would be provided in an ongoing basis and consolidate our fire and give us actual first responders who are in station all the time, who have the ability to make a medical response, who have the ability to respond when these things blow up, right? And 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 get some containment, who have the ability to work with the local fire departments, because I guarantee you, three-hundred-megawatt facility goes, it's going to take every fire truck in this county, right? So I would like to see a bullet here that says that we, when we make this ask, the primary, especially being that it's in the fifth district, right? Just saying, the, 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 the primary focus be on, focusing these dollars on the consolidation of and 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 development of a county rural fire. District. Right? And then, one more, and then I'll get off my soapbox. And that is that I would like to ask staff to reach out to our lobbyists at the state level, because there needs to be some type of amendment to this bill that protects, and we need to reach out to our state legislators, one brand new and one who's been there, who may have got to vote on this, and I'd like to know how that vote went. Reach out to our state legislators to find out about what it takes to get an amendment to this bill to protect Solano County, if they can't protect all of the counties, protect at least Solano County, because it seems like we get pillaged on a regular basis, whether it's wind and 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 windmills, or the potential for solar, or now, batteries. Everybody wants to come here and affect our citizens and affect our environment and affect our agriculture, but they don't want to compensate the citizens for that. They don't want to make us whole. They don't want to protect us. They don't want to do any of those things. I said that was the last thing, but I got one more. I want to make, I want to find out if it is allowable, legal, for us to reach out to the nonprofits in Solano County as an entity and tell them, hey, anybody that signs off on this is taking fifty-two million dollars out of the pockets and the hands and the and the and the mouth of the Solano County citizens. So if you want to sell everybody out for ten grand. So if you want to sell everybody out for 10 grand.
We're gonna know who you are.
We're, yeah, the citizens are gonna know you took $52 million from them, right? So I just want to make sure that we can get that, if it's allowable, just saying, if we can get that message out. Alright, now I'll, now I'll be good. Who's next? John, go ahead. Follow that.
Yeah, I am gonna follow that. So.
If the project wasn't moving forward, I mean, if there wasn't a project right now, we wouldn't be looking for training equipment for first responders, would we? We wouldn't be looking for an insurance bond for decommissioning. I think those are things that they've got to take care of anyway. So for me, the community benefit is not to pay for the stuff that they're impacting already, but above that, and to, you know, to some of the things that Mitch pointed to, you know, it's been 25 years we've been trying to get the consolidated dispatch. To help us get to that, uh, the infrastructure and the ag industrial, those to me are benefits, but just taking, using that money to pay for impacts that their, their projects bringing forward is not a community benefit to me. It should be above all of that. They should be paying for that kind of stuff itself and not claiming it as a community benefit because they're the ones impacting us already. They're impacting our fire, you know, our, our communications and those kinds of things. And there'd be no reason to bond for decommissioning if they weren't building a project on ag land. So I think those are separate and the, and you ought to categorize those as, here's the impacts from this project. And it's, it's the impact of ag. Again, it's the stormwater runoff, it's the stuff that's gonna enter the creeks, uh, there are some big drainage ditches out there that end up taking water across separate from the, the stormwater that comes off the creeks. And what happens to the house across the street, which is about 100 feet away from, uh, the property line of this? What happens to their property values? Good luck trying to sell that thing when it glows at night and it hums. I'm, you know, the loss of value to those people out there. And, and who's gonna, again, people are gonna look at and say, well, do I want to farm that? Am I sure? In and around it? I don't know. But you know what? You, you can go out to the unincorporated because there aren't many voices. You can do whatever you want to out there. And that's been a mantra of a lot of, you know, Mitch talked about some of the impacts, you know, the mining of the wind. We get nothing for that. Here's another resources being in mind. If they ever had a gravel yard or a mining operation, we'd get something for that, but we get nothing in return. It's like the habitat conservation. 30,000 acres have been identified in, in Solano County and they're just gonna put habitat on it. We're able to get something, uh, with the lookout slew project because we sued them. And they, it was a time-sensitive project, state wanted to get done and we got, we got a few things. I don't think we've got fully compensated for the impact, but we got more than we were gonna get. So I think we should take a very hard look and s- look at those impacts as they radiate out as to the things that are going to happen that we can't think about right now, but certainly if you start listening, listing and looking at how it starts to domino out. You know, uh, again, there aren't a lot of voices out in the unincorporated, certainly when they tried the project in Vacaville, that community came unglued. And this, this is not that far away from it, probably less than a mile. Just to Mitch's point, Leisure Town's around the corner, the, uh, the subdivision with Popular Willow Maple and all that there.
Mm-hmm. Block pad.
Better maps.
What's previous?
Better maps.
You know, um, if I might, through the chair, uh, speaking of which, I'll just show you briefly, but this, this is another area of, um, consideration is on that map, Supervisor Hannigan. So if you look on the left side, upper left side of that map, and we all know where the Vacaville Dixon substation is, and you see the, kind of the, the.
Is he the big J, the kind of upside down J?
The 80.
So the piece that's on the other side of 80 is where he's talking about.
You see the vertical, vertical patch of, uh, you know, kind of dirt colored patch on the vertical side just to the west of Dixon substation? That's where the second application is being proposed.
Yeah, that we just got, that's the one we're meeting. There's another one, yeah.
There's a peaker plant there that was put up and the people that lived on Mills Lane and back up to that property were.
So FYI on that, um, you know, one of the other things that we've been learning through the technical working group and, you know, things, we're learning a lot as we go, but, um, the, these, these thermal runaways are a little tricky, you know, because the theory now is to let them burn. They just let them burn. They don't, they don't fight them with fire. They, they might cool the area around the fire so that there isn't a continued thermal runaway to the other cells next to them, but they don't hit them with fire or with water. That's why that, that's why that Tesla truck burned on the 80 for a number of, you know, a, a while.
Is it concerning special foam or something like that?
It's, it, unfortunately, I, the, I'm, I'm, I've got a cursory understanding of this, but when they hit them with water, that steam is full of cyanide. And so first responders won't get near it if you hit it with water because they're chemical fires.
So, okay, I got a question then. And this is just a simple hillbilly in me, right? What happens when you have a, a, a fire and it's raining? Then you're kind of a mess.
Locks the gas down.
Oh, I'm sure, right, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
I was just asking.
So, you know, again, we're learning a lot about these as we go forward and, and to James' point, that technology is getting better is what we understand. It's coming, it's just not here yet and it's not, I guess the cost i- is not there. But SMUD has been utilizing some new technology and they're running a pilot project with that. And it's something that we're all looking at locally here as to, maybe that's, you know, a good way to go in the future.
And, and I'm not trying to be an apologist, but I think that we have to be realistic about what we can affect with this process. And so that's why, partially why we're here, trying to get an outline of, of some of the, and what we have is a very, a much more, uh, much more defined list of, uh, benefits that you're seeking and things that we can, uh, validate through the process, but we want to be realistic as well. It's just that the process is sort of hamstrung us somewhat.
Alright. So Supervisor Williams has a question.
Yeah, well, yes. Well, first, I want to say, you heard several times, me and Supervisor Masburn to go and have those conversations with our, our legislators. So I saw y'all taking notes, so kudos for that. But I want to go back to their offer. And, you know, we've talked about the greater good, but then I want to hone in like Supervisor Vasquez did, the individuals that live proximity to, uh, this facility. They mentioned that they wanted to offer each homeowner $25,000 to offset how much they could lose. It could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, or millions, that each homeowner could actually lose within 300 feet of the project perimeter. Has, I, I feel like an appraisal should be done based off of any other locations that may already have these facilities, how much the property values have already decreased, and so that we can actually go back to them because the individual homeowners, I'm sorry, $25,000 is not enough money, in my opinion, um, to have this facility in place because we don't know how much is really gonna affect them. What if they want to sell and they're stuck? And they're gonna be the one who lose. So I, I feel it's in the best interest of our community and those who live nearby and that, within 300 feet, that $25,000 is not enough. I would like an appraisal done to see what that would really look like on, in real time, not this, I don't even know what, um, calculations they use to come up with that number, but I think it's on us, since it's our responsibility to look out for this community, is to really figure out what that really will mean. So if you can, you know, look at that would be good. And so that we, when we go back to negotiation with them, we let them know, no, $25,000 is not enough. This is how much you actually should be offering those homeowners that are gonna be impacted the most.
Yeah, and if I might, Supervisor, just a point of clarification. That $25,000 compensation is part of the example that we researched, the Medway Project in, in Massachusetts. This applicant is not even proposing that at this point.
Oh, they're not? This is just, um, what you looked at, something else.
That's correct.
Somewhere else. Okay, my, my misunderstanding of that. Well, that's a whole nother state. This is California, so we already know $25,000 is not gonna be enough. So, um, let's go ahead and get some real numbers that's based on California prices, uh, so we have something to negotiate with. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Brown, did you have something?
I just was gonna, uh, mention that noise ordinance, the humming, I didn't even, that didn't even occur to me. That's gonna be 24/7. And what kind of destruction might be on the roads? I think they have to bring in heavy equipment probably frequently would be my guess, not just.
We anticipate, yeah, and we, as part of the EIR process, we'll go through that.
Oh, okay.
And so I understand that they haven't gotten to that point yet, but that is a, a concern.
Alright, I have no more lights, but I do have one more question myself. This will be for County Council and she's not gonna have an answer right this second, but I would like to know if, uh, AB 205 has had any litigation challenge? Is there, because it's California and.
Yeah, the city of San Juan Capistrano is suing the state over a application that was denied.
Boom. Okay, so that's what I want to know. Thank you, rookie. So what I want to know is, is if there's vulnerability to litigation against AB 205.
You get a card now.
Yeah. Then, uh.
I got cookies when we get back upstairs.
Then, then, then I would like for staff to look at.
Application had been deemed incomplete. I mean, there's the.
Yeah, that application had come all the way to the city council. The city council had denied the project and then they used AB 205 to take a second bite at the apple. And so we have slightly different facts here because the Corby project hasn't come forward. However, we are tracking that litigation to see if there's anything.
If there is any vulnerability to that state legislation to litigation, and this is California, you can sue for anything, then we need to be looking at how we go about that and, and what we need to do, uh, to.
To support.
Yeah, to support it and initiate it.
Try to buy a brief or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love to sue the pants off of the state.
Well, how about we just get the project denied? Right?
Or that. Alright, so, uh, uh, that said.
Want to go to the recommendations? We're gonna call them the duh recommendations because I think that we've sort of, yeah, provide direction as to whether the board wants to request a host of community agreement. That's a duh, I think, I think we're gonna go for that in lieu of the requirement. Yes, yes, absolutely. And then obviously we've taken feedback today. So, um, we're gonna take this feedback, obviously as we come through more information, we'll, and we'll keep you updated as we go through the process.
Alright, I have public comment on this. As some folks have been very patient out there.
I will vacate.
Yeah, so vacate the podium, James. Alright, so with that, unless the board has any more questions, anybody, anything? Bill? Earn? Anybody? Okay. Alright, so, uh, Mr. Barilla, sir. And thank you for your patience while we got through that.
Oh, I've found this, I have found this very, very interesting. Um, I have a question. I don't know if you can answer it, but first of all, I've noticed that a lot of, uh, these so-called green projects that have been done elsewhere were dependent upon federal money. And, and, you know, and I remember some of them that they touted very loudly on the East Coast, I think these were wind projects, but, uh, once inflation overtook the federal funding, all these corporations backed out of them. Is this chemical waste dump dependent upon federal mu- uh, funding, do you know?
I'm not, I'm not aware of anything that they've applied for specifically, but they should be eligible for both investment tax credits and production tax credits under the Inflation Reduction Act.
So without, I mean.
They'll get tax breaks.
But with the change in, uh, changing of the guard in Washington, there's a good chance that the funding that was set aside for this in previous administrations may get pulled back perhaps?
Perhaps.
Maybe.
I'm sa- you know, there's a hope. Um, the other thing, if I recall, some months ago, I did look it up, and I do believe that Assemblymember Wilson did vote for this, for, uh, AB 205. So perhaps you would want to have a conversation with her about why she bestowed this gift upon us. Um, okay, I guess that's all I've got. I just was hoping there was a silver cloud or silver lining in the cloud with the, uh, maybe the funding for this disappearing. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill.
You know, if you look at the way it was written, it was the industry that wrote it and handed to the legislators to carry it because it favors them. It, it doesn't favor the community or the people, favors the, the, the industry itself and the legislation is written that way.
Mr. Cully.
Mrs. Cully.
Mr. Cully, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Counsel, I'm gonna ask for permission to speak for five minutes. I'm, my name, uh, my name is Gaul Cully. I am a Realtor here in town. I am a member of the Realtor Land Institute. I have some insight. And my phone has been blowing up from citizens that I am currently helping and, uh, citizens that are very concerned and maybe impacted that could not attend. So I'm asking for five minutes instead of three, please.
I'll do my best here, Wilson.
Okay, thank you. When I came here, there were several points that several of my, my clients have asked me to bring forward to you. The first of, how could, how could this law bypass the county and public process and what can be done? Can lawsuits be brought forward instead of this coming forward and moving, moving forward? We have a huge concern with many of, not only my neighbors, I live off of Pleasance Valley Road, uh, but many of my clients are rural residential and they want to know about the fire buffers. They're very concerned about fire. They are aware of the concerns that they just let these things burn. We live in a different type of county that have, that has a, a community that's very concerned with that. They have health concerns. The, they understand that the electromagnetic field that goes around this, this can not only impact the health of the citizens, but also the impact on the soil. And they're very concerned about not only that area, but also their ag area around. As a real estate agent, we have a duty to give not only disclosures that we know about, but also the county disclosures. This is now going to be a disclosure item that all Realtors are going to have to disclose and update. So both the Nash, the, the Northern Association of Realtors as well as the Southern Board will need to know this as a disclosure item because you at this point do not have a choice and that's going to impact the sale of all of those properties. Uh, another question was, where's the power gonna go? So we got these power stations. If they're not providing power to our citizens in our county, where's that power going?
It goes into the grid.
Let me go right back to the.
Okay, so that was, so what is the financial benefit for each of the citizens if it's coming off our solar panels or coming off the wind farms or whatever? What is their benefit? I'm sorry, I feel a little nervous.
They would argue reliable power throughout even at the peaks because that's what they're saying. No brownouts. Blackouts. Blackouts. That's what they said this year too.
So with the, um, there's been a lot of initiatives that have gone forward to focused on going electricity, right? So electric being versus gas.
Right.
It's an environmental issue. And so what we don't have enough of in the state of California frankly is storage for that electricity once it's generated. And then the ability to put that back on in the event that there are blackouts or brownouts or whatever it is. But if we're asking citizens and businesses to utilize electricity in their vehicles, electricity in your homes, that's gonna require additional power. And so, um, it's a way to store power versus just letting it go. Because there's a lot of power that is generated, but it's just let go because there's no place to store it. And so these, these initiatives are going like this right now, right?
Right. I, I do understand that. Councilmember Hannigan. Supervisor. I, I beg your pardon, uh, again, sorry, Bob.
Sorry.
You've known me for a long time. Yep.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, you, yes you can. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm like going.
No, no, no.
Please.
Where's the real estate industry in this? Should they not be concerned?
So.
If every place one of these pops up, it's gonna impact real estate.
This, this.
I would think the industry itself, California industry, real estate industry would be looking at this and saying, whoa, wait a minute.
The fact is, is that we are under ethical mandate of highest and best use. I just came back from the National Association of Realtors, uh, Realtors Land Institute training in Chicago, and they talk about highest and best use as density by definition. I and most of us in this room know that highest and best use in this case is agriculture because class one land in our county and our region feeds not only our community, but it feeds the United States and hopefully with the tariffs beyond in other countries. So this is not just a local issue. This is, this is, this is a national and a global issue in our county. That's why California forever is a very heated issue because that land is dry farmed. It doesn't need any, any water resource. That's, that's the point of this class one. Another question that was asked by, by one of my clients was, what happens if there's a fire and it cuts off the main arterial, arterial of Highway 80? That is the main and only main highway that goes between Sacramento, which is our capital, and, and the rest of our, our state. and, and the rest of our, our state. It's right there. These are questions. Again, let me just...
You could also submit all those questions to us.
I beg, okay. I, I want to make sure that I...
To be quick, while she's looking at that next question, the, the risk to these is not fire, it's more the smoke. Equally as bad, but the, so from a fire standpoint, that is a critical concern, but it's not in these instances. The biggest risk is, is the smoke that creates. So the hope is obviously if something like this happens, arterial roads will be open and there'll be ways to get through, but it's the smoke that's the threat.
Right. So you know the wind, the way, like Mitch said, you know where the wind blows. The wind blows from the north to the south, which is where all of our population of people are, especially in Mitch's district.
And, and I would point out that, that in, in, in several of the fires that have occurred in our state, these have burned for several days at a time. And the evacuations that have been ordered in San Diego and Long Beach and some of these other cities were for days at a time. And that was because of the smoke, as you said, because the fire would be contained on that 40-acre site. But the smoke, which would be blowing across I-80, would effectively close I-80. And can we imagine, if we just take a second, what it would be like to close I-80 for three days?
Well, it's not only I-80, it's 505.
Right, 505, all of that, yeah.
You can't get to, to I-5. So the, the consensus of my clients, and I would also say that this is a consensus of myself, is please consider bringing a lawsuit forward. Do not allow this to happen. Prolong it as far as you can so that you can find a loophole, please, to bring a lawsuit forward. I also suggest, if you could please, bring this to both of our Real Estate Association meetings. Request that by, request that you speak to them about this because there is a lack of education. No one knew the depth of this. I didn't know the depth until I just heard this presentation. This is very frightening that you don't have any choice. The citizens have no public comment. Their hands are tied. And the only, the only thing that you can do is, is ask for $52 million that you probably aren't going to get because it's not required. Bring the lawsuit, please. Thank you.
So the other thing is that you could, you know, by the end of the day, this thing will be up on the web. And anybody can then look at this presentation.
So what's the retribution of the, what, what should the citizens do? There's a bunch of people that are listening on, on Zoom right now. What can they do?
Reach out to your state legislator. Whether it's at the Senate or the, or the Assembly.
Yeah, through the chair. I just also want to say that right now, it's in the comment period. So the citizens do have an opportunity to comment. You comment to the CEC. So you can submit a comment. What we are doing here is obviously formulating all of the, the direction from the board. The county will be formally commenting. So it is not yet a done deal. There is still the, the 30-day comment period before the CEC deems this application complete. We can say you didn't submit in your application your impact on, on the residents. You didn't submit all the other things that you've raised. You have an opportunity to comment to the CEC on this project.
None of my, none of the citizens received a, a postcard even, saying, hey, we're, we're thinking about putting this forward. Nothing.
So in any part of the staff presentation, does it say what the CEC is and that it's not an acronym? And does it list their contact information so that the public will have access to that? And if it doesn't, can we please put it on our website?
We call, we call CEC as California Energy Commission, but we can provide information as far as...
And a link or something so people can click it and go...
Yeah, so one thing, so the CEC's deadline for deeming this application complete or incomplete is December 4th. So I would suggest, if you want them to actually consider the comment before that deadline, you submit it at least 10 days in advance of December 4th, which is partially why we're here, is we're really under the gun. And then I will also note that after the application is deemed complete, they will have to go through the CEQA process. And AB 205 does require two community meetings. As, I think the wording is like as close as practicable to the site. So presumably, those will be held in Vacaville. And so that's one thing to track and make sure people show up for and public, and make up public, make public comments.
The only way that I found out about this is through the agenda. The agenda was released on a Friday of a holiday weekend. And I didn't see this until Sunday, and I did my part and sent it out to all of the social media sites who probably saw me. I even made a Canva about it. How can we get this information about the public comment to all the social media sites, all of the, all of the cities so that this, so that citizens have the resource on, on what to do?
From a county perspective, asking staff, wouldn't that be as simple as a press release from us?
Yes.
That would be how.
Including, including the website.
What's that?
Lori Wilson voted yes. So that's very disappointing. That's very disappointing indeed. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you for all the things that you do for our community, every single one of you I know. And I've seen all of the good things that you've done over the years, and so I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Alan and his staff, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're not taking a vote. Do you feel like you got enough input from the board? Just asking.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Somebody get him a varsity jacket.
It's green, yeah, it's green, all right. In the sense it's cash to somebody.
All right, we have no more items from the public. We're moving to closed session. I don't think we're gonna have a report out this... We may. We may have a report out, not sure. But in case we don't, I'm gonna ask the board for comments at this point. If anybody's got any adjourned in memory or... No, I'm seeing those. Yes, ma'am.
So, yes, I would like to adjourn in memory of Kathy Angle. She's, this is Chris's mom. I've known, Chris owns part of the land that I don't want taken over, over there, in Crisilla Road. Yeah, he's, anyway, let me just go through and read about Kathy. So Kathy grew up in Roseville, California. She graduated from Roseville High and went to UC Davis and got a degree and a BA in history and an MA in elementary education. No, I did not know her as a teacher. I just knew her as Chris's mom. She raised four children, Chris, Karen, David, and Michael. And so she had a lifelong interest in genealogy, family history, and she loved the 49ers and Giants. I know, that doesn't mean we can't still be friends, but the family would like to thank the management and the staff at Riverway Assisted Living Memory Care in South Jordan, Utah, which is where she passed away, for the care and comfort that they provided her. And next Tuesday, I'm glad we don't have a board meeting because at 10:30 is when they're gonna be having the memorial service for her at Brian Breaker. And so I will be attending to support Chris because it's not easy when your parents go. So thank you very much for letting me adjourn in memory. And I'll pass this down. So we have it. Okay.
You have nothing?
So just, so if, yeah, because I just want to make sure I get the resolution next week. We'll talk later, Veronica. Thanks.
All right, and with that, Madam Clerk, item 16.
Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A, title Director of Health and Social Services.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, on that, can we have a 10-minute break?
10-minute recess, absolutely.
We need to refer on a couple of things relative to that item.
All right.
I was gonna push for 15, but...
15 sounds good.
All right, 15-minute recess and then we'll...
Are we back here or are we upstairs?
Right here in the, in the, in the...
Over here. Okay, because I have to get my notes. All right.
All right.
15-minute recess, sounds good.